Okay, everybody, since this is a county meeting and the county does stuff on time. Oh, there he walked in. I was gonna start the meeting without Lee Bran being here, but...
Hello? Buddy?
Daniel. Is that you, Paul?
Yes, it is, sir. Greetings from Montana.
Okay. We're gonna put you on mute because you make too much noise.
I'll put you on mute because you make too much noise.
I have the ultimate button here, dude. Okay. With that, I'm gonna call the meeting to order and we're gonna start off by doing the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good morning and welcome to July 28, 2020 County of Fresno Workshop with the City of Fresno. It is our hope that this workshop will, with presentations and questions, will lead to a better understanding of COVID-19 virus and the impacts it has had on our community in Fresno County. Attending in person today for the City of Fresno is Mayor Lee Bran, Council President Miguel Arias, Council Members Esmeralda Soria, Mike Grabassi, Luis Chavez, Gary Bretafeld, and Nelson Esperanza. And attending for the County of Fresno is Vice Chairman Steve Brandow, Nathan Magzik, Brian Pacheco, and attending by teleconference is Supervisor Sal Quintero and Council Member Paul Capriolio. I would like to remind everyone that this workshop is for information only and not for individual pontification. Time has been allotted for each item, including questions by two government bodies only. No statements will be allowed to be read by either body. Madam Clerk, at my direction, please set the time for each item and raise your hand when the time is up. Madam Clerk, introduce the first guest, which is Dave Palmerville.
Department of Public Health, Update Director Palmerville and Dr. Vora.
Good morning. Thank you very much for inviting us to be here today. I will give some, a brief summary of where we have a current situational update, and then what our county's response framework has been, and then some comments with regard to building capacity as we go forward. Go to the next slide. So, just the current situation that we have, this is a table that is taken from the State Department of Public Health website. It is the monitoring list table that a number of counties are, thirty-some counties are on this list, and really looking at the epidemiologic criteria for COVID-19 in various communities. We currently are doing about 217 tests per 100,000, which is about 2,100 tests per day in Fresno County. That number increases to about 2,400 on any given time period. The case rate per 100,000, the State Department of Public Health is reporting 223 per 100,000. That rate has been fluctuating over the past few weeks, but the-
Excuse me, Board Chair. The material isn't readable from this distance, nor is it in front of us. Can you just read the information out loud?
I'm sorry, yes, I can, I can comment on that. And I, we don't have to use the slides if that's better. We can just rely on verbal comment. There's one slide that I would like to use. So, if you can, so just the current situation is we have about a 11% positivity rate. That's the number of tests and the denominator, the numerator is the number of patients that have tested positive. And that is a condition where we would like to see that at below 8%. The hospitalized patients has been increasing over time, and if you can skip forward two slides. This is a chart that's just showing the increase. This is from our website. It's a chart that's showing the increase of COVID hospitalizations generally over the last thirty days, which has gone from about 107 across the hospitals in Fresno County up to a high of 311, and right now it's at 298. The number of ICU beds that are part of that number have gone from 24 to right about 65, and that's where they've been stable over the last seven days. With that, I'll just read the rest of my material or provide a response. So, I just wanted to give a summary for the City Council and the Board today about the response framework that the county has been undergoing. We've had a Department Operations Center set up in Fresno County from, really, the beginning, late February, early March, to coordinate planning, logistics, finance, and communications, to coordinate with our response partners, and it was part of a larger county response focusing on the essential workforce of the county, making sure that the essential workers of Fresno County had the resources available to be able to carry out its activities. One of the key sections within that has been the Hospital and Healthcare Section. This has not just been Department of Public Health. We've brought together the hospitals to work on hospital capacity and coordinating resources, the development of an alternate care site, which included developing operating criteria, admission and discharge protocols, as well as staffing, and coordination of resource requests with the hospitals. You can remember back, you know, as recent as 90 days, hospitals were having a very difficult time getting the necessary protective equipment they needed to be able to carry out activities. A lot of that response was coordinated back through the county and then with the State Department of Office of Emergency Services. We've also worked very closely with the California Department of Public Health Licensing and Certification Branch. We invited them into our DOC. They've been participating for a number of weeks, really focusing on their involvement with the skilled nursing facilities and other clinical operations. We have established strong partnerships with the schools and universities. The reason that this is so critically important is they have resources that we have been able to take advantage of in response. They've also been key in providing services to our communities through food distribution, the distribution of education materials, outreach materials, and coordinating with us on case investigations. We have a medical investigation team that's currently county workforce with some additional supports from the state. We have 180 staff currently working on the medical investigation team. Those teams, they're broken up into teams associated specifically with congregate settings, medical investigation for general cases, contact tracing, closure, contacting people after they have completed their illness, and to close that out, but also to encourage them to donate plasma through the Central Valley Blood Center. We also have a provider line for our physicians when they have questions with regard to cases, and we've developed a training team. Critical to our operations has been our Public Health Liaison Group. That, we have been working very closely with the medical community. Dr. Vora heads up a provider call weekly that includes several hundred providers, hospitals, healthcare providers, to make sure that they're getting current information, as well as we're getting good feedback from them. We've had a local government call with cities and special districts, as well as tribes, on a weekly basis. We've also assigned teams to go directly to each of the rural cities for coordination. We've been doing employer visits, working with the cities to identify employers that are essential service workers, primarily in the food processing industry, to provide education, validation that protective measures are in place, and to work on communication resources. We've provided a responder, emergency responder call that's on a twice-a-month basis with all law enforcement, emergency medical services, and fire agencies, really making sure that they have all of the information they need to keep their workforce safe. That's included setting up a medical consultation and testing program if the agency's employer was not able to complete that. We've been working very closely with the schools and colleges, not only on their operations, but also as a resource. We've had ongoing calls with senior living facilities and skilled nursing facilities, again closely aligned with the California Department of Public Health. We've had outreach and coordination with our faith-based organizations. We've had a homeless task force that's been run by the Department of Public Health and the CIO's office, working very closely with public health to address concerns. We have a business resiliency program that's been set up through the Fresno County Economic Development Corporation, establishing communication with our businesses, trying to make sure that if they are essential, that they have the protective measures in place, and consultation on those issues, but also as we started to open things back up, that they have an understanding of what the requirements are. We've had an ag liaison, so we've had a number of communications with the Farm Bureau, as well as some of the other labor ag organizations. We established a point, a single point of contact within my agency to deal with, communicating with the large employers that are in the ag industry, providing technical assistance, really focusing on the OSHA standard that's been developed for the ag industry. And that's a lot as well with the food service industry. We have been in ongoing collaboration with the California Restaurant Association, as well as with the industries directly, in doing training and education. In fact, we had a great workshop with them yesterday. The county's also established a response, personal protective equipment supply chain by purchasing large volumes of protective equipment that may not be readily available to essential workers. A lot of our medical community, the smaller operations, were having a difficult time being able to acquire that PPE, and so we've done a good job of making sure that we've done bulk buying, and then we were able to resell that to the businesses at our cost. That's also allowed us to be able to distribute PPE to essential workers and our emergency response teams as well. On testing, I mentioned before, we're at 2,100, 2,400 tests per day. Every week presents new challenges with regard to testing. We could spend the rest of this workshop talking about the challenges we faced, but there is a lot more testing being done. The, there have been challenges with regard to specimen collection and transport media throughout the whole response to the pandemic. There has been laboratory testing capacity issues that seem to be getting better, but they, we still struggle as a state and nation. And then the timely reporting of results, and that's really critical. We talk about medical investigation, contact tracing, you know, that's all hinged on the positive report coming in. And so, we as a community and public health program can do a much better job if we have good, timely resulting. The focus of future activities will include building capacity in the primary care system. We see this really focusing on our federally qualified healthcare centers, where there's some 83 doors in Fresno County that people can obtain services from, and many of our farm labor who may not be documented have the ability to receive medical care, primary care there. So, we are really trying to reinforce that connection as the focus of much of the hard-to-reach population for medical. And we believe that the medical testing operated out of the FQHCs and real healthcare centers can be mobilized and be able to reach some of the harder pockets of the community. We have tested that. We've done a lot of education outreach with the, with the federally qualified healthcare centers, and we believe they are an important resource. The next slide just has a, two pieces of information that are on our website. You cannot read those, but they're a listing of the number of tests conducted, the population, the rates of positive cases and so forth by zip code. So, we're starting to have a better understanding of where this, where the disease is having disproportionate impacts, as well as a chart showing the amount of testing that's being done in Fresno County. Very briefly on building capacity going forward, we have been working with two lead nonprofit organizations, Economic Opportunities Commission and Building Healthy Communities. We have a contract that's actually out for signature with those two agencies that will involve a number of subcontracted community-based organizations to focus on health education and outreach, to assist us in medical investigation and contact tracing, to provide quarantine supports for people who are isolated, and that's gonna be a framework that involves a number of different community-based organizations through two lead contractors. Technical assistance and funding, we are, we have a template contract that's being developed for expanding testing at the federally qualified healthcare centers, which we believe is vital to many of the rural communities, and Dr. Vora is working on a health officer order that has been developed in other counties, requiring primary care providers to provide testing. We are still building our team, and there's two parts of this that are important in terms of the county's response. The 183 staff that I said that are working on contact tracing and medical investigation are many staff that have been reassigned from other program areas, and we need to get those folks back into their day-to-day operations because they are services that are necessary in the community that need to be addressed. And we are looking to develop contracts with our primary care clinics and other partners to assist with medical investigation. My last comment will be about the Central Valley Unified Support Teams that the Governor talked about yesterday. This is a state-local partnership where state agencies will be working more aggressively on the multitude of issues to determine resource needs and to build action plans and bring resources to be able to address primarily the essential workforce that are, that are so many in the Central Valley. And with that, I'll pause and turn it over to Dr. Vora.
Thanks, Dave. Good morning, everyone, and thank you. Thanks Supervisor Mendez, Mayor Brand, and civic leaders for allowing us this opportunity. As Dave said, we've been doing a lot, and we fully appreciate that we have much more to do. If I can get the next slide, I'm just gonna talk briefly and go over a very brief timeline of where things have been in Fresno County with our public health response. I'll also try to share some of the lessons we've learned, and then hopefully outline the steps towards strategic planning on where to go from here to help with the future of this response. So, we'll just, we'll just do it by month very quickly. So, in March, that's when we first had our first case, and the emergency declaration by Fresno County was passed by the supervisors. That's when the City of Fresno ordered shelter in place, and the state also created a shelter in place covering the whole state. As you all remember, that's when a lot of the disruptions that we're still experiencing really began regarding schools and other business activities that had to stop in order to help slow the spread of the virus. Worldwide, this is when COVID-19 was being diagnosed in multiple countries. Here, more locally, our first cases were from cruise ship passengers who were returning to the U.S., and that's really how our paradigm started, was really investigating those individuals, creating programs for quarantine and contact investigation, and they were done by our Department of Public Health Team for all cases in Fresno County. Next slide. In April, and you can see the little yellow dots is the case counts. Our curve stayed pretty flat locally, as well as statewide. We struggled with testing a lot in the early weeks, and things have gotten better, things have not caught up, but the testing was a real issue that took up a lot of bandwidth and time. The symptom screens and the temperature checks were a response, so everybody that came into this building basically had to get screened and answer questions. That was something that we introduced weeks before the CDC recommended it for the whole county, and I think that's served a lot of our employment and workplaces very well. The hospitals and all of our primary care clinics actually reported a paradoxical falling off in terms of their patient visits, and in fact, it was recognized that a lot of patients were avoiding medical care, either out of fear or because of other factors. But that was kind of an interesting development that we didn't foresee. This was also around the time that the Governor released a roadmap consisting of six steps to recovery, and those steps included testing and contact tracing, protecting vulnerable populations, ensuring hospital surge capacity was intact, developing effective treatments, social distancing when possible within workplaces, as well as in schools, and reinstating stay-at-home orders if needed. Those were all elements of the six steps that the Governor, Governor's roadmap to recovery, which was introduced way back in April, included. Next slide. So, this is just a picture from what that roadmap looked like. As you can see, they thought a lot about safeguards related to healthcare, protecting vulnerable populations, just making sure that public health capacity was up to speed to test and trace and isolate everyone that needed to do that, and developing protocols to work with workers and residents and keep them safe. I also think that they, oh yeah, next slide. In, go ahead, next slide. In May, our case counts kept rising, and that's kind of what the curve looked like throughout May. Our testing was actually given a big boost because we were able to set up two testing sites in very late April and early May at Fresno City College and in Sanger. We were also very aware that people were developing what's called quarantine fatigue, and that is really just, just a fatigue related to the lockdown, to the lack of access for doing a lot of the business and social activities, and obviously with kids being out of school, that was felt throughout the community. We submitted a variants attestation, and this basically meant that we were attesting to our capacity to not only reopen, but mitigate and contain the epidemic with the resources that we had, and that we had a good plan in place. This was a pathway that was provided by the state for counties that were felt to be not quite ready to reopen, but wanted to go ahead and, and go ahead and attest to their ability to vary from the Governor's roadmap, and that's why it's called a variants attestation. So, our attestation was submitted, and it was approved, and that brought us to early June. Next slide. So, in early, in early June, we really started to think hard about all of the different sectors that we had to work with. That included farm workers, as you can see on the left-hand picture, schools, and childcare services, as well as private businesses, you know, ranging from hair salons and spas to entertainment centers and other family businesses, obviously restaurants, bars, brew pubs. All of these required different responses, but we've been working very hard trying to work with industry leaders in all of those different groups, and trying to, trying to make sure that they keep their employees and their customers as safe as possible. In June, we noticed that our case counts were rising more and more rapidly, and that was really related to a variety of factors. A lot of activities opened up. A lot of businesses had opened up even before the attestation was approved, but obviously the attestation allowed businesses and other sectors to open up. Next slide. And this is where we are today. So, in July, that bend upward became a surge, and in many ways has become a disaster. These are the current case counts as of a couple of days ago, which is that our total cases are 12,000, and our total number of deaths is 112. What that means is that approximately 1% of the county has acquired the COVID infection and has been tested, and 1% of those who have been confirmed positive have unfortunately passed away. So, these are grim milestones that we reached sometime in the last couple of weeks. This curve is kind of interesting because you can sort of see where those two blue lines in the bottom right corner really illustrate what's, what's been going on. In the first few months, we really had a flat curve, but in the last month or so, the curve has just bent upwards and upwards, and you can see the slopes of those two lines are quite different, and that's really, you know, if you understand what that means, then you really understand why we are so concerned at this time. All cities and zip codes are being affected. COVID patients are being found in retail, food service, clinics, meaning clinical healthcare workers, farms and packing plants, and in our, in our own county jail, as well as state prisons. All of our Fresno County hospitals are severely impacted at this time. The fatality rate is approximately 1%. It's affecting ages 45 or greater, which I used to think that was old, but now I think that that's very young. So, and for 50% of cases, the source is unknown, which indicates that there's a broad community spread, and that we really have to work together as a community to mitigate and bring this curve back down to a more manageable level. Next slide. So, I'm an emergency physician, as many of you know, and I worked in the emergency department yesterday. So, this is a picture in the parking lot of Community Regional Medical Center, and we're basically delivering emergency care out of tents. They have to be air-conditioned, so they have to really run wires out there. It's, it's just a big project to try to create new space where there isn't any space to treat patients, but that's what our hospitals are being forced to do. And Community Regional Medical Center, while it is the biggest hospital in our county, it's definitely not alone in having to have these creative solutions that really just speak for themselves in terms of, when we say hospital capacity is maxed out, this is what we mean, is that they're really having to stretch their footprint and deliver still standard of care in very unusual circumstances. Next slide. So, what happens next? Well, I shared two pictures here. The top-left picture is from 1918, and the bottom picture is from present day. So, this is what an influenza hospital used to look like, and this is what we have set up at the, at the Fresno Convention Center just nearby. This is just rows and rows of beds. Next slide. They, they basically have just hard metal cots and folding chairs with paper linens, a first aid kit, one per bed, and really nothing, nothing more than that. There's no x-ray machines, there's no medications, and there's definitely no staffing that comes ready with this, with this alternative care site. So, while we will be able to take a few patients there, they will have to be very, very, very stable and require very little medical attention, so we're not creating a new hospital. And, and I think that, that this is a misconception that I think is out in the community, that we have this new hospital that's ready to go, and so that way we can conduct business as usual, and that is not at all the case. This is really just a disaster, and, you know, in many ways represents a failure rather than a success of our ability to properly contain this epidemic here in Fresno County. Keep going. Communication is very hard. We've leaned into communication. Dave Palmerville has been very transparent and, and really tried to share the story of what we've been doing. I hope that I've done my best to communicate what's been going on throughout every phase of this epidemic. Our website and our web team works very closely with our epidemiology team to try to get good information out to everyone. I know this is hard to read, but you can go to our public dashboard and see all of these different ways that we try to communicate what's going on. But clearly, the communication isn't getting through, or else we wouldn't have this rising case count and this surge. So, that's something that I humbly admit we all need to focus on and find better solutions for, but I'm just sharing what we have so far in an effort to see how we could build on this and hopefully provide better and faster communication about what's going on, so people can make better decisions about how to keep themselves safe. Next slide. What have we learned through our response? Well, I know this is a busy slide, but I'll try to walk through it because I think this is a really important set of things to learn and to share. So, multiple factors have led to COVID-related crisis for Fresno County. Reopening safely is going to require a lot of coordination, not only a public health policy, but also prevention education, and public participation in safe behaviors. Young people in crowds tend to spread the COVID the most. Even though they do, they fare pretty well, there are rare but serious complications that are being seen in the otherwise young and healthy demographic. Chronic illnesses among high-risk populations are very high risk, and that's where the most hospitalizations and the more deaths, and the most deaths are occurring. Problem spots remain crowded or congregate settings, and that includes nursing homes, shelters, and jails, and essential work sites. For a lot of different reasons, those are areas that we really struggle with containing this outbreak, and the virus is able to spread very quickly, and many times very silently whenever you have those settings. Any kind of social outing, even backyard parties that seem very casual and informal, and any group social activities are all contributing to the spread, and outdoor activity is less risky than indoor activity. So, all things being equal, we really prefer everything be done outdoors during this time, which obviously is hampered by the temperature, but hopefully as things cool down, we will be able to capitalize on that fact about this, this coronavirus. So, we can spread, we can respond successfully in basically two ways. We can slow the spread of this illness, or we can build more medical capacity. So, the question comes up, what about effective medications, or herd immunity, or a vaccine? Well, although people are working on that, and we certainly look forward to having those, I, I don't think that those should be really something that we can rely on immediately to help with this phase of the crisis. The reason being that it's probably going to take another six to 12 months for proven pharmaceuticals or a vaccine to become routine. The drugs don't actually reverse every single complication, so if you start, you know, an antiviral very early, then you might have a chance, but once someone has heart failure and lung, you know, lung failure and kidney failure, it's really hard to give a magic drug that reverses all of those immediately. So, they're not, there's no silver bullet, and there never will be. So there's no silver bullet, and there never will be. That's just how this infection works. Supplies are and will be limited, and that means medical supplies, medications, even PPE. We're already facing a lot of supply shortages, and we can anticipate that that will continue for the near future. And herd immunity doesn't work for all viruses, or else we wouldn't be dealing with HIV, hepatitis C, and many other viruses that have been around for decades. So those are all reasons to really qualify what we can actually do, which is, again, slow the spread and build more medical capacity. I still remain optimistic. I think successful navigation of this crisis is still possible. It's going to be essential to have good communication and good teamwork. To, just to summarize this slide, I think time is scarce, I think denial is deadly, and I firmly believe that failure is not an option for us. Next slide. So how do we slow the spread and add medical capacity? Well, the facts about this virus is that it needs breathing human beings to replicate, and we can outsmart this virus when we know this by staying home whenever possible, using social distancing outside our households, creating space whenever we're indoors, wearing a mask to prevent viral spread to other people, cleaning surfaces and hands that can harbor respiratory droplets, doing as much social activity outdoors as possible, and promoting safety and prevention education for everyone. I know that those seem like easy tasks, but it takes a lot of homework to try to get people to actually incorporate those habits and actually do them every single day in order to be fully effective. We can add healthcare capacity by expanding the number of hospital beds and the number of staff, by creating alternative sites for recovering patients, by developing, testing, and distributing effective medications that get people out of the hospital faster, by testing people with symptoms and delivering fast results, by training people to track close contacts and do the contact tracing, which you've heard a lot about, by ensuring that infected people can stay away from others and have safe places to quarantine effectively, and creating support services to make that a reality. So together, this is the set of strategies that helps lower case counts and deaths. Other communities and other countries have done this, and they've done it successfully. While none of these is 100% effective by itself, they all work together to help flatten the curve. So our best evidence suggests that in this epidemic, the changes are most effective when they're done community-wide. Next slide. I just wanted to share this graphic. I really think that what we're talking about is really the tip of an iceberg, and when you look underneath what the COVID represents, there's a lot of other unresolved and chronic issues that we're actually contending with, and that includes, you know, poor or lacking inter-agency coordination, lacking medical knowledge, or frankly, trust in the medical institutions that are tasked with keeping people safe, under treatment of chronic health issues such as diabetes, hypertension, kidney disease, liver disease, shortages in the skilled workforce here at the Central Valley, and economic fragility, which forces people to work despite these very risky circumstances that they are being forced to work in. So I just wanted to share this concept, is that, you know, while we're talking about a viral infection, this viral infection is exploiting a lot of other issues that have been rooted in our community for a long time. Next slide. So where do we go next?
Dr. Vora, how much longer do you have?
This is my last slide, buddy. Our strategic plan is that we need the following elements to have a coordinated response. Prevention education that reaches all county residents, testing frequently and widely with rapid results, tracing to identify and quarantine those who are at high risk, quarantine support services to ensure success with the above, outbreak investigation and prevention in crowded areas, rational and safe reopening of schools, businesses, and other sectors, coordinated acute hospital response, that includes the hospitals, the clinics, the EMS, and the acute care site that I shared, and then continuous reassessment and feedback, hopefully in a spirit of constructive dialogue from all the stakeholders to help us refine this process. Next slide. So those are all the slides that I have. I'm happy to answer questions, and I'm sure Dave is also. Thank you very much for allowing us this time.
Thank you. You're probably going to be the most interesting person in this room, so.
Thank you.
With that, we'll start the questions, and Brian had asked me that he had a question that he wanted to ask here, but we'll start at 20 minutes now. Go ahead.
Director Palmerville and Dr. Vora, the governor announced yesterday that he really wanted to focus on the at-risk population in our rural communities. I know that our county ag departments distributed over 800,000 masks and many other protective equipment, and I know over a quarter of a million more are on the way. Could you tell us what the Department of Public Health has been doing for those residents in our rural communities, please?
Well, I'll start, and then Dr. Vora can chime in. So from the very beginning, we started to communicate with the ag industry in particular because we knew that they were, they control the workplace, and they have the ability to establish worker safety standards. We actually convened a rapid work group with them around mid-March and started to identify the protective measures that we wanted in place. The example is, Dr. Vora had required employee health screenings before people came to work, and how was that going to be operationalized in the ag industry? It also, and so we started to work with that group, and they have been very effective at implementing both administrative controls as well as engineering controls and employee screening at many of the operations that are the essential workforce that we talk about, the packing industry, the meat processing industry. It's very difficult to control infections like this, but they've taken everything from the screening into the plant, as well as the break areas, and providing information and coordination. We've responded to many complaints or concerns that have been raised by people about the workforce. I've had my team going out and doing inspections of those locations. On the medical side, we've also built capacity, working with, again, the federally qualified healthcare centers to make sure that they were able to provide both drive-up testing for individuals who are symptomatic, as well as screening, and our department has been out in rural areas doing screening and testing as well. Now defer to Dr. Vora.
Yeah, we've been working with the ag industry and really rural populations ever since the beginning of our response. We've been trying to provide education. We're working with a broad array of stakeholders, from academics at Fresno State to industry leaders to everyone in between, trying to figure out what the needs are, what the best way to message to these groups is, obviously trying to use multilingual messaging as much as we can, and really teaching good prevention for those workers who are critical infrastructure workers, because we know that their livelihoods really depend on being at work, and that they don't have the resources to try to, say, quarantine or stay off of work or work from home the way that a lot of us have that luxury.
Thank you.
Okay. Do you have any, you got a question? Go ahead.
Thank you. Dr. Vora, first of all, thank you for your honesty and clarity. It's no surprise you're an ER doctor, and you make clear decisions in your profession. Can you be more specific on the farmworkers? How many farmworkers have been tested, and how many ag employers have been inspected? I'm looking for actual raw numbers.
I don't have the raw numbers in front of me, but here, I could share with you what we're trying to do with the rural communities in terms of testing. For several months, we've actually provided testing models where we really try to partner with federally qualified health centers or primary care clinics in the rural areas. We've had to figure out testing for ourselves here at public health, but we recognize that we can't do all the testing by ourselves, and so what we've really adopted is a model where we teach other people how to do testing, and we ask them to adopt that model and move forward with it.
Thank you. If you can just provide us the actual numbers.
Yeah, we'll try to get those to you.
As follow-up. And then my question related to the healthcare side is, you guys, are you guys identifying the locations of infections? Are you identifying the employers, or not, and why not?
Yeah, I mean, our medical investigation team conducts a 40-minute interview with every case. That's very time-intensive, but that really gets into where have they been, where do they work, what does their household structure look like, and the employment history comes out through that.
Do you publicize the locations of infections?
It depends. We publicize by community with the actual place of employment. We really try to work with the employer to make sure that they can help us with the contact investigation and with the quarantine. When it comes to the hospitals and the healthcare workers, it's understood that every hospital is going to do its own infection prevention, and large employers have actually taken that on as well because they employ employee health doctors that take care of their employees.
Do you require essential workers like ag or meatpacking plants to inform all their employees when infection or breakout occurs on their site?
So we require them to inform the employees that would be affected by that case, because those people would be close contacts, and, you know, what needs to be done is that those close contacts need to be quarantined or have extra monitoring if they are going to go back to work.
I know Mr. Man mentioned that contact tracing is delayed. How far back is it delayed? Are we looking at five or 10 days before contact tracing occurs?
No, it's usually delayed by 24 to 48 hours. I think the real delay is where the tests come back. So as soon as the test is done, sometimes it takes seven to 10 days for that test result to come back. That's unacceptable, but that's the reality that we're facing right now. Most of the time, the test comes back within 48 to 72 hours, and then within the next 24 to 48 hours, our team is able to find that person, track them down, do that 40-minute interview, and then track all their contacts and reach out to them.
How much additional services have you provided to farmworkers or the rural communities in terms of medical services? Can you account for that in any way?
You know, I don't think that we can break that out today. It's very difficult. For example, we don't, during our interview process, we may ask where the employer is, but oftentimes, we're not able to determine, in some cases, we're able to discern whether they are a farmworker or not, whether they're in the ag industry or not. We have had significant difficulty in making contact with people who've tested positive in some cases, and then getting good information from them. There is a significant amount of fear that's out there, and concern about reporting information to the department. So we think that our community-based organizations will help that to be a friendlier face, maybe, to be able to maybe gather information more effectively. But information gaps are very difficult at this point.
I know we all received our CARES Act transfers in early April, both the state and the county. We're now going into August. When do you anticipate the community-based organizations to be out in the field providing any services that you've contracted with?
So we have the contract in place. It's been signed on, or it's being signed on the provider's side, and we've been working with them for the better part of three or four weeks, from an initial proposal to, you know, a contract that's now being signed. It'll come to Gene here very shortly, and I think they're ready to mobilize, at least to start to get going. I know that it's always difficult with regard to staffing resources and getting the right people, you know, employed and so forth, but I believe they're ready to go.
My last question.
I'm going to interject.
Just one last question.
No, you've had enough time, because you can ask that question to Gene, because that question needs to be asked.
I have a question about the, at the station specifically.
Well, I said your time's up. Mike, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Productive conversation today.
I'll try and get one in there for you. Director Palmerville and Dr. Vora, I want to just thank you both. You, by the way, while I make my comment, can you please pull up the slide, slow the spread and add medical capacity?
Sure.
Is that possible? Okay. You talked about communication and teamwork being essential, and that's why I'm here today. I do want to take a moment to thank you early on for directly helping me open a testing center in District 2. So part of my goal today is to find out exactly how we can help you accomplish this.
Thank you.
I think that's the whole goal, and the reason is, you know, I talk about small business a lot, not from a standpoint of greed, but there are people that are like anyone else, and they have these small businesses.
Yes, sir.
And they're at risk, and they're close.
Totally.
And they're worried about their livelihood.
Yes.
Essential workers, our farmworkers, they're worried about their livelihood, too. So my question to you is, how, today, we're worried about COVID. I firmly believe we're a long road away from there, but we're going to get through this. We're going to get through it, but we have a lot of work to do. My concern, though, is, once this is over, we're going to be talking a year from now, two, three, four years from now, about the economic fallout of COVID. You have kids, this generation is going to face parents with, you know, losing their homes, because we have rent forgiveness, but we don't have forbearance, we don't have forgiveness. So we're going to see the trauma of all those things happen.
Yes, sir.
How do we address that? We have to put health first, but how do we also holistically look at the economic impact it's going to have on families?
Thank you for sharing that. It's a very important question. I think it's a very complicated answer. The way that I'm looking at this, and again, I humbly submit this is my bias as a ER doctor, is, you know, I'm used to triaging things, and when you triage things, you deal with the most emergent issue first, and then the lesser emergent issues later. So someone having a heart attack has to be dealt with first, someone with an ankle sprain has to be dealt with later. Not that they're both not important, not that they're both not contributing to someone's overall quality of life and livelihood, but clearly, one is going to kill that person faster. And in the same way, I know it's not a perfect metaphor, this is what we're dealing with with COVID. The viral pneumonia is going to claim a lot more lives and create a lot more trauma than all of these other things that you're totally appropriate in bringing up, which is the business failures, the lack of education, all of these other disruptions that families are having to suffer. We need to talk about those, and we need to address them, but we're never really going to address them, you know, you can't deal with a sprained ankle if the person has a heart attack at the same time. You've got to deal with the heart attack first, right? So that's kind of how we're looking at this. I think it's all important, but because we have to do things in order, we need to deal with the medical response first, and that's kind of what's taking priority right now. Beyond that, you know, I'm open to what other civic leaders have to say about this very important question, but thank you for bringing that up.
Okay, Steve, you had a question?
Yeah, I do. So either Dave or Dr. Vora, I want to revisit the potential overflow facility at the Convention Center, which was sold to us originally as a field hospital. Dr. Vora, you mentioned that it's really been an example of failure rather than success. You've told this board on previous, in previous board meetings.
Yes, sir.
That staffing could be a serious problem or a serious setback to really opening that facility.
Yes, sir.
With the governor's increased commitment to the valley, which you mentioned yesterday, is there an opportunity to get this facility back on track and allow it to become a helpful and productive asset to the medical community? And then what would that look like? And finally, have there been any discussions with our medical partners what this could look like, and maybe including it being staffed partially by the state or the feds?
Yeah, I think, thanks for asking that, Steve. All of those are important issues. We will certainly work with all partners at the state level and even at the national level for helping to get this field hospital staffed. I think that locally, our staffing capacity is extremely scarce, and it would be a disservice to our hospitals to pull nurses and respiratory therapists and doctors away from the hard work that they're already doing at all of our acute care hospitals. So then we're left with pulling skilled work staff from outside of our county to help staff this hospital. So that is our intention. We are, you know, fully intending to activate it even in the next week or two if we need to, depending on what our numbers are doing at the hospitals. So we are still working on that. Whenever we say that staffing will be a challenge, we just mean that, you know, the long-term staffing that will be required for this hospital to really be a fully-fledged facility, there's 250 beds there, and for us to really treat it like a full-service hospital, we're going to need all the things that a hospital has. I just don't think that we're there yet, and I don't think that that's the intention for what that facility is supposed to do. Keep in mind that we have an identical facility in Porterville. It's smaller, it's 50 beds, not 250 beds, but it's exactly the same thing. It's an alternative care site, and that Porterville facility, even though it has 50 beds, they've never had more than 15 patients in it, which just goes to show you that these patients have to be so stable that it's really hard to identify them out of the hospitals, because all of the patients at the hospitals are too sick to go to a place like this. So that's kind of where the difficulty lies, is, and we saw this on the East Coast with those Navy ships. We saw this, you know, with all of the different floating hospitals that have come through. They were vastly underutilized, and that's just kind of the reality of this pandemic, is that it's really hard to fill up these alternative care sites. The hospitals, over many years, have been designed to do what they do best, and it's hard to recreate that in a convention center. Thank you.
Okay. Mayor, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Here we are, okay? I want to do a follow-up on the council president's question about, when do you guys plan to start to take action on your non-medical treatment, your non-medical treatment plan, including details, location?
They can't hear you because you're masked.
That was hard. That better?
Yes.
So when is the county going to start taking non- So, when are, is the county going to start taking non-medical treatment options, including details like locations, goals, outreach, timelines?
So, you know, we certainly have shared those with the stakeholders that we work with directly and our plan is to expand the number of stakeholders that we have and be fully transparent about what our plans and goals are because we need them to be on board and understand what those goals are. Dave, do you want to add to that?
Yeah, I think that we are, this has been a little bit of constructing a plane while it's in the air. We've made, we make a lot of incremental decisions through our Department Operations Center, which, which, you know, we're meeting three days a week and making incremental decisions from everything, from the contracts that we're negotiating to the public outreach education campaigns that we're doing and so forth. We shared with all the city partners and the city participates on our DOC call, by the way. So, you have representation there and certainly that's a voice that if we're not answering questions, we can certainly do the best we can through that. We are rolling out a new public education campaign starting this week that, that focuses on spokespeople from a variety of different ports, portions of our community that have a voice that's not just the Public Health Department, really encouraging the public to, you know, stay at home, to socially distance, to wear a mask and so forth. We will continue to do that as we go through this. I think that we are looking at this as, this is gonna be with us for a while and so the better we can do to plan and work together now will, will, you know, hopefully make it easier for us six months from now. But we're, this is gonna be with us for the foreseeable future and the only vaccine that we have developed here in Fresno County is six feet of distance, wearing a mask and trying to avoid those large gatherings. That's the best, the best things that we can be doing.
Okay, thank you. One final question. Dr. Vora, you mentioned two strategies, slowing down the infection rate or increasing the capacity. Can those be done simultaneously to get the best result?
Yes, sir. I do believe they can and I do believe that they, that they should be the two-pronged approach that we have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ezra.
Thank you, Chairman. Just one quick question and thank you, Dr. Vora, for out, really outlining where we're at and the lessons learned. One of the things that I, I'm interested in is your recommendation in terms of where the county should go, given what you've outlined and where the curve is at. You mentioned the attestation point and what this county did to try to open our local economy. Where, what would be your recommendation from the medical perspective to get us back on track and to flatten the curve? I get that there's education to be done and more testing.
Yes, sir.
But I think that we need to be serious about taking control of the current situation in order to really flatten the curve and then have the opportunity to really open our local economy and get back to some level of normalcy.
Thank you for asking. I think once we slow the spread to a point where we can really manage it, that's when we can really think about reopening some of these sectors. And when we reopen, we're gonna do them with all of the lessons that we've learned. We're going to make sure that safety is paramount for all of the businesses that are employing people and all of the customers that they serve. And we learn more and more about how to keep people safe with every experience. And so, I feel confident that once we are able to slow the spread and once our curve flattens, that that's when it'll be time to discuss reopening sectors and we'll proceed cautiously so that we don't really create more problems when we do that.
Just to follow up, so does that mean rolling back so that we, our community kind of stays in place and we slow the curve?
Yeah.
Because I think that, I think that that's an action that these bodies need to really consider as we move forward.
It's, it's a real balance. Whenever you reopen, you are going to increase case counts just because, like I said, this virus loves crowds. And so, whenever you promote social activities that allow people to gather, you're going to have increased case counts. Whenever that gets done at such an intensity that the case counts rise astronomically, the way that they've done, then you're really going to have a problem because our medical capacity can't keep up with that. But, you know, if you can flatten the curve to where, yes, you still get a few cases, but we can manage it. Our doctors feel confident that they can help treat those patients in the hospitals. Our contact tracers feel confident that they can track down all of the close contacts and ask them to stay at home. All of our support services feel confident that they can provide alternative housing or whatever else is needed to make sure that quarantine is successful. It's just a matter of numbers. When you have so many numbers that you're overwhelming your resources, you can't contain this pandemic. So, when you get your numbers down, then your resources catch up to it and once your resources catch up to it, then you can think about reopening different sectors carefully so that you don't get back into that same situation again. So, it's really just a balancing act. We kind of have to keep one foot on the gas and one foot on the brake at the same time and really just kind of play it by ear. I know that that can be disorienting, but, but that's kind of where we are. It does feel like choppy waters, but, but that's just where we have to be in order to be as responsive as possible. And that's why we closed down the bars and closed down all of the indoors, indoor activities. Whenever we saw that our surge was happening in early July, that was exactly the rationale that we used, is now it's time to hit the brakes and we'll have to push on the gas pedal a little bit later, hopefully whenever we control this phase of the crisis.
Yeah, wait, hang on. I just got one deal to finish off here and I, and this is a pretty much a yes or no question, but do you think unregulated social behavior is probably the number one problem we have?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Because we're actually out of time.
I mean, if it was a yes.
Do you have, do you want, you have a comment on that, Dave? Because I mean, you basically do the statistics.
Yeah, I do. I think that as we're talking with our case investigators, there is a lot of common denominator that's associated with family activities, households with, with more people in it than we can, we can, that people can be isolated, as well as gatherings, weddings, funerals. We have a lot of cases that, that have been driven from there. I will say that I think we are, in hearing the governor both on Friday and Monday, the steps that they're taking to really double down on the essential workforce and, and understanding, you know, from a protective measures while, while member, while employees are working as well as supporting them when they have, have to be quarantined are two of the big steps that we can take. And I think that, that's, that's progress. I think it's realization that that's a step that can help us without shutting down more sectors.
Okay, thank you. And now we'll move to County Administrator, Gene Rousseau.
Okay, good morning, everyone. I'll try to be quick with my presentation to allow for questions. You all have a slide presentation in front of you, so if you can't see the screen, you can, you can refer to the slide presentation. Page two, real fast. On March 15th, a Sunday, we declared county and public health emergency. On the following Monday, we, we had a hard opening of, as Dave referred to at the Department Operations Center, that it was actually soft, opened two weeks earlier, or two or three weeks earlier. We also opened up our county EOC at that time on the 16th. The following day, the, the board ratified the emergency declaration and, and we had, we had a discussion on the role of, of the CAO as emergency manager and, and there was, and I want to make it clear that, that the board is looking to the CAO's office and the Public Health Department to drive policy. We bring policy back, we give them updates periodically, but we're responding, we're the first responder to this pandemic. And, and where the city can help us and we need your help, we are, we've, we've been living this since, since mid-March or actually early March, over 120 days. And so, this isn't a sprint, this is potentially a marathon and we have to think long-term when we, when we're looking at certainly CARES Act funding and what have you. On the 28th of, of April, we did a board presentation, we, we accepted the, the federal CARES Act money that was wired to the, to the county on April 22nd, a few days earlier. And then to, earlier this month, I gave a very similar presentation on July 4th, on where we were at in terms of what we'd spent and we were, we.
The 7th, July 7th.
July 7th, sorry about that. Anyway, gave it on the July 7th, very similar presentation that I'm gonna give this morning. Real fast, on page four, the, excuse me, on page, on page three is a summary of the Fresno County funding. Again, we received a little over 81 million, 81 and a half million on the April 22nd via wire transfer. The governor's budget includes over $16 million in CARES Act funding that we will receive over the next couple of months for a total of $98 million, which is in an interest-bearing fund. So, that, that amount will grow as we, as time goes on. The slide four, three general requirements for expenses are, you know, they have to be related to the COVID. They, they're expenses that weren't in your budget in, for fiscal year 1920 and they're all eligible expenses incurred between March 1st and December 30th. Most importantly, on the bottom, I bolded it just to make sure everyone sees it, is that this CARES Act specifically is not, is not, excludes the ability to use it for lost revenue. And for the county of Fresno, we're looking at between 35 and 40 million dollars of, of lost revenue going into this year's budget. Similar to the city of Fresno, we're kicking the can down the road, so to speak, waiting for the, what the feds are gonna do. And we're very mindful when we look at the overall allocation, that if the feds don't have an additional allocation, we really need to use some of this for our operating budget, which, which makes decision-making a little bit more difficult going forward. The next slide on page five is, is a recap of the expenses that we've, we have spent through June, which is almost 27 million dollars. The first, the first part is personnel diverted. We threw bodies at this, at this event. Public health basically is using a quarter of its staffing, over 100 folks. We transferred folks from other departments, library, public defender, DA, wherever we can get them to help us with this response and we're still using some of those today. And we'll use them, and we're trying to wean them off and try to staff up so some of the public health employees can get back to what they, what they were doing before the pandemic. So, we threw a lot of, lot of resources at this. Telework improvements, that was my big goal early on, is to get, get folks working from home as much as possible. That required a lot of infrastructure improvements, the purchasing of, of laptops, monitors and so on. Robert Bash, who's in the back of the room, will help, help set this thing up today. He's done a great job in that regard. You know, you know, one thing to keep in mind when you're the first responder agency, you've got, you've got to run, you've got to run the county, run the county's business while you're responding to a pandemic. And that can be very challenging emotionally and physically, draining and we're still early in the event. So, on your way down, public health expenses of 2.4, that's really preparing our offices. We have 8,000 employees spread throughout the county, probably a million square feet of, of office space, if not more, that we had to go through, actually Robert shop again and, and look at social distancing measures, splatter guards, the whole nine yards. And, and we're quite frankly still working on that as we speak. And then the economic support item of a little over 5 million is the hub grant that the board asked for early on as a grant to businesses in the county, $5,000 per business, 100 businesses per, per district. And the EDC was gracious enough to help us get that going and it's been, it's been a help to the community. The last slide is, is the actual proposed expenditures for the county. And again, I can't reemphasize this enough that, that this is gonna be a long-term event, an event that could potentially go most likely to a year from now, if not longer. We run, we run various jails, 3,000 inmates, which is now down to 2,000. We have a juvenile hall. We have a lot of responsibility that, that quite frankly, the city doesn't have and really doesn't probably want to have. So, in that regard, that, you know, the first line item is we've spent almost 27 million, really from a continuity of government perspective, a lot of that went to that. The, just to keep the, the wheels going, to allow our employees to work from home, to protect themselves and, and I'm quite frankly, really proud of, of that aspect of it because we've learned a lot as, as a county. We're doing business differently as, as the city is, as other agencies. We're working remotely, we're meeting, we're meeting virtually and I think we've come a long way. We've advanced our use of technology quite a bit in this, in this event. Jail medical enhancement, I just signed two contracts that are gonna go to the board August, August 4th, hopefully that's the right date. And that's a little bit between 6 and 7 million dollars for additional jail medical staff and testing for our inmates. And that just gets us through the end of December. If this extends beyond that, we're gonna have to increase the contract further. The next line item, medical investigations and contact tracing is really Dave's shop. It includes the hiring of, of a number of seasonal employees. We're talking about making it permanent to, to help us with the contact tracing, testing and what have you and Dave's, and personnel from Dave's shop that is dedicated to this event. If you haven't had a chance to sit through or listen to a Department Operations Center meeting, I suggest you do that. You'll have a better appreciation of what this group does on a daily basis. He skimmed over the, the groups that they set up as they were building the airplane in the air, but it, I can't say enough about the groups, the religious groups, the SNFs, the hospitals that, that typically weren't talking to each other. We're all talking to each other and I think we're gonna come out of this in much better, much better shape in terms of relationship building and what have you. The alternative care site is, this is a budget in case we do have to open it up. Hopefully, we don't, but if we do, it's about $2 million a month. This is a budget for about five and a half months. If it goes beyond that, we're gonna have to pull down additional funding. Education and outreach, originally in my, on my presentation on July 7th, I had $10 million in this and we scaled it down a little bit to seven. I, I've referred to this budget as squishy and people get annoyed with me. They think it's not a permanent budget, it's not, it's not something that, that's set in stone and, and I, and my response is because the virus is gonna dictate how we spend the money. And so, where we might have $11 million in, in, in the care site, that could be higher, it could be lower. Jail medical is the same thing. The, the two contracts I referred to earlier that I signed between 6 and 7 million, close to 7 million dollars, is really just through the end of December. If this goes beyond this, which I expect it to, to go beyond, the 10 million might not, will not be enough. Testing, I have, we have $5 million for that. We've spent quite a bit of testing, on testing already. The state has paid for the three large testing sites. We don't know if they're going to, to ship the cost to us at some point. Each testing site, and the three largest ones being City College, Sanger, and the new one in West Fresno, those cost about between 400 and 450,000 a month. So, if we were to have to pick up that cost, you know, that's 1.2, 1.3 million per month going forward. So, again, when I refer to this as being squishy, it, I can't say enough about that and I don't want to go too long. The next item is, is really, you know, we could have a workshop on this alone. Our efforts in homelessness, Sonia De La Rosa from my office and Dewan Utech have spent almost 100% of their time working with CBOs and, and RH builders to, to really get as many homeless folks off the streets as possible. And, and the city assisted with funding and we appreciate that. But when you're able to get 20% of a population, estimated population of homelessness off the street within a month or two, that is a tremendous success story. And we've worked to extend those, that, those beds through September. And one of the suggestions we'll have when, when we have question and answer time is if you want to put your money, if you want to put additional money somewhere, the homeless area is an area to put it in. And also keep in mind, and I was gonna mention it earlier, but I forgot, and that is, what we're hearing at the federal level is that at the minimum, well, most likely, the December 30th date will go away. So, the default is, is they, they go back to the CARES Act and they tell counties and cities and states, live within what we gave you with the CARES Act, we're gonna give you greater flexibility to use it for lost revenue, unlike their initial instructions. And we're gonna, and they recognize that December 30th is, needs to go away because, quite frankly, agencies are gonna, are gonna be dealing with this pandemic well into next year, as I said earlier. So, the homelessness effort is, I can't say enough, is phenomenal. And right now, as we speak, we've got supervisor to my left that was on a meeting with, with Sonia and with the, the local housing authority, looking at the, the various homeless pots that are coming down from the state and we're looking at potentially buying a hotel or, or something to that, to that effect to increase our capacity. So, I, I think that's been, it's just been a tremendous story and I'm really proud of the efforts of Dewan and Sonia and the CBO group that are dealing with the most vulnerable population in our county. And we've established, we've given them a ton of PPE, we've done telemedicine, we have quarantine rooms. It's just been fantastic, a great effort. And, and if we can go to the next level with, with these, with additional funding. And if we can go to the next level with additional funding to increase our bed count to 500, 600 beds, we'll do even more. So in my opinion, we've done more for homelessness in probably the last five years in this community than in the last couple of months, more than the last five years. PPE is an ongoing challenge. This is a boilerplate item. Dave referred to the program that we have earlier, where we're buying PPE at our cost using our purchasing power, and then we're selling it to businesses at our cost. I share the story where I went to my dentist, and he told me that he wasn't able to fully open up his office because he didn't feel like he had a sufficient PPE inventory. I told him about the program that we have, and then unfortunately I had to go back for additional work. So when I came back two weeks later, he told me he had availed himself of the PPE, and he was able to hire an additional half dozen employees to fully open up his office. And there are probably more stories like that in the community. So that's been a tremendous success. It's something that we really need to most likely promote more, because businesses, hospitals, the health arenas need PPE, as we well know. And then the last area is really getting the word out. I would say our messaging was okay, it could have been better. We're now working on a surround sound approach, and we're going to go, and we're looking at even more press communication and education of our community. That's something that we need to do more of. We've established relationships with United Way, they are helping us with our call center, and we appreciate that. EDC is doing additional work in fielding calls for businesses, because quite frankly, our call centers were inundated. So at the end of the day, we have these pots of money that amount to almost $80 million. And our total allocation for CARES Act is $98 million, leaving approximately $18 million. Again, you know, Dave told me early on, we're going to blow through this. And as an accountant, I'm generally, you know, conservative, I like to hold things back. I don't want to be caught and have to use general fund reserves to cover operations. But at the same time, we have a pandemic, and we're not going to hold money back if we have to. So I see the arm being raised, and I'll stop there.
Okay. Questions? Go ahead, Gary.
First of all, I want to thank Dr. Boron, Dr. Palmaville for all the great work that you're doing. I know it's not easy. Question, what is the average age of the death of a COVID patient in Fresno County?
So they've tended to be elderly. Like I said in my slide, there's been no one under age 45, and they tend to be in their 60s or higher.
Yeah, it looked like when we were doing the analysis, it's like in the 70s for the average age.
Right.
Okay. And you mentioned the hospital beds, there were about 311 in Fresno County COVID patients. How many hospital beds total are there in Fresno County?
1,700.
So is it about a fifth that are COVID patients?
Yeah.
At this point? And would that be the same for the ICU, for Fresno County ICU beds?
It's about the same proportion, yes.
Okay. So they're severely impacted, you said, so I'm wondering, how do you define that? If they're a fifth of the patients, how does it become severely impacted? Are you afraid that they're going to rise and become half the patients? Is that what you're concerned about?
No, they're full. They're full of other stuff. There's also other illnesses going on.
Right.
So that's what I mean when they're severely impacted.
Because of the other medical issues and then COVID?
Yeah. In any given year, we have a severe shortage when it comes to medical capacity in our county. And this year, because of the added burden of COVID, they're even more severely impacted.
Got it.
And, you know, COVID just forces you to live life differently. And certainly in healthcare, you have to put on more PPE, you have to find isolation rooms. These hospitals just aren't built to take care of a lot of COVID patients, because there's so few isolation rooms, and that's why we have to push things out to the tents and things like that.
Got it. And a couple of questions that my constituents have, so I'm presenting it. You know, we've closed restaurants and the hair salons and the churches. Do we have evidence that specifically the spikes are resulting from those businesses in particular?
Yeah, I mean, you know, anytime people gather, that allows the opportunity to spread the virus. And just to correct, we didn't really close them, we asked them to move their operations outdoors.
Outdoors, okay, which makes it a little more safer.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay. And the masks, they're effective, how effective do you feel that these masks definitively are?
Yeah, they definitely add a layer of protection when people can't do the social distancing.
Okay.
So, you know, it's just another layer of protection to help slow the spread.
So when they're unable to do the social distancing, even though you have the masks, you're still potentially at risk, obviously?
Yeah, the risk is much lower.
Okay. Because one of the concerns that my constituents have is the releasing of the criminals, the inmates, and wonder why can't they use masks if they're, obviously, help prevent the spread? People are being released into the community. We obviously don't know whether they're socially distancing when they leave the population in prison or jail. So people are concerned about criminals being released and wondering why they weren't given just masks and help make it safer.
Well, I think the requirements now are anytime that you can't, when you're indoors or when there's potential for you to not socially distance, you're to be wearing a mask. So that would apply to everyone. So that would be applicable to the inmates being released as well.
Yeah. My constituents are concerned that there's no pushback on keeping people who commit crimes in jail, even though, you know, obviously when they leave, we don't know that they're not committing crimes, we don't know that they're not socially distancing, we don't know any of that. So that's a concern.
Hey, Gary.
I think you're conflating two different issues, Gary.
Yeah.
I mean, by releasing people in jail, we're creating space in the jail to keep those inmates safe, so that they don't end up getting hospitalized and taking up a bed that everybody else needs.
Yeah, but worried about them committing.
Sorry, that's not clear.
Okay, thank you. Wait, no, no, just one other, I'm going real quick. I just want to ask about schools. Because schools, we know that the kids are struggling with depression, anxiety, social isolation, child abuse isn't being reported. The American Academy of Pediatrics, 67,000 pediatricians are recommending kids go to school. Why are we not finding a way to provide choice for parents who want their kids to be in school, and those who can't be in school, or teachers who shouldn't be there because of medical problems? Why are we not trying to help kids rather than sacrificing them?
Why don't you ask that offline? Thank you, Gary.
Chairman Mendez, I've got a question. This is Supervisor Sal Cantaro.
Okay, thank you, Sal. I gave you heck on a text message for not being fast enough, so go ahead.
Okay. My question is this, in the first presentation, which falls into the second, Director Palmaville showed on one of the charts that they're providing public health liaisons. And then also in the second presentation, the CAO results showing the chart of money being provided for the homeless, the care, $3 million. I think all that is great. My question is, we were given a chart a while back, and then also in today's Fresno B list, different zip codes in Fresno County where we have a high COVID problem. And my question is, what are we doing to address those zip codes? Are we providing public liaisons? Those are low-income zip codes, and a lot of the families are living together with extended family members, and they're low-income areas. So I don't know, what are we doing to help them out?
Supervisor Dave Palmaville, I think that is very much an observation that we have made as well, and I believe that that is an area of significant concern from the outbreak standpoint, from disease investigation standpoint. We talked a lot about the workplace, but it's actually the home environment that has been the conditions that have been much harder to control infections in. And so I think that you're going to find that those zip codes that have higher densities of people, where you can't isolate, tend to see that the illness passed around across people who are in the same household. I think contributing to that then are social activities that are occurring, where families may get together and then spread the illness on more from that perspective as well. So I do think that we need to be more strategic as we go forward and look at the areas where we're seeing the outbreaks. And I think it's going to be a couple of things that are going to help us. One is going to be better education to people, to make sure that we are reemphasizing. I think this issue with regard to opening up sent a message to our community that everything was open, and that everything was okay to go back to normal, and that's not been the case. And then I think it's also going to be, you know, incumbent on us to do a better job of targeting resources to be able to allow people to isolate and quarantine.
Okay, thank you. Esmeralda, you had a question.
Thank you.
Chairman Mendez, Council Vice President.
Wait your turn there, Cap.
Okay, brother, let me know when I have a chance.
Okay, Esmeralda said, go ahead and ask a question. She's letting you take her place.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Well, thank you. Again, Vice President Paul Cepiole here. I wanted to thank those that put this meeting together in the past, as past president a couple of times myself. We've had very productive meetings, once the county and the city of Fresno sit down and exchange ideas and information. So this is a good illustration of how effective that can be, and will continue to be in the future. And my suggestion is that we have a monthly meeting of this nature for the public to understand what we're doing and how we're handling this. And more importantly, more importantly, if I may, this will indicate the consistency. Previous speaker said there's been some misconceptions and inconsistencies. If we meet together.
Hey, Cap, I started this meeting by saying no statements, and that's a statement. So I'm going to move to Esmeralda.
Thank you, Chairman. Just a couple of questions, and thank you to the CAO for that presentation. So one of the things that I feel that we've learned kind of in the last few months is that in our community, because we have a lot of farm workers, and they are essential workers, you know, they have deemed to be essential workers, many have been impacted by COVID, and many because of their circumstances, including other essential workers like grocery workers, are not covered by paid leave protections. And so what we have is that we have essential workers living in our community that may opt not to go get tested, or even if they're sick, they won't say it or stay home because they will lose a paycheck. And we already saw by the iceberg that I think was really portrayed the issues that have compounded.
What's your question?
Well, I want to know, are you guys thinking about doing some right-to-recover funding mechanism to allow farm workers, to allow grocery workers to stay home while they recover if they're infected by COVID, or, you know, if it's taking seven to eight days before they get their test, so that they don't lose out on a paycheck and they're able to survive during COVID and not continue to infect and spread COVID in our community? So that's one question that I'm hoping you guys can address, and include in your budget as you guys are looking at, you know, how to support some of the most impacted communities. Also, housing assistance. I know the city of Fresno, you guys will see in our presentation, we have provided some housing assistance to folks. I know that there are, you know, countless families that have been impacted by either a reduction of hours in their job, or they don't have a job at the moment as a result of COVID. And so we want to avoid homelessness in our community. How are you guys looking at investing additional dollars to support, to ensure that we're preventing homelessness by providing housing assistance, that these folks are not, you know, evicted at the end of this pandemic?
Your question was so long, you burned all the time out, so there's no time. Thank you. We'll move to item five.
Chairman, I do have one question. The county last discussed using CARES Act dollars to fund the county pension system and the county healthcare system during your July 7th meeting. Is that the intention of the county?
Said we were out of time.
Can somebody give me an answer later on how you intend to use the CARES Act funding?
Not using it for that.
Is that a no?
That's a no.
Thank you. We're here for questions and answers, Chairman.
Move to the next item. You guys ready to present?
Yeah, if you allow our staff member Tim Mormon to room, he can take over the presentation.
He's probably outside smoking a cigarette.
Well, so then we do have time, maybe if the CAO can answer my questions. I think that those are very pertinent and impact.
He's here.
So, Tim, you want to walk slowly to the podium so we have time for more questions? Take your time. So Chairman, the question for the council is, the county has provided relief for businesses. Are you intending to provide relief for residents, since you wanted to stay home and stop the Well, take our answer later, if you wish to give it later.
Okay.
Do you have our PowerPoint, buddy?
Yes.
Chairman? Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
While we're waiting, I don't know if you got the news that Chuck Norris was infected with COVID-19, so now COVID-19 is on quarantine for 14 days.
At the end, maybe you can tell us another joke. Okay.
Thank you, Chairman Mendez, Board of Supervisors, City Council, Mayor, esteemed staff members, Public Health Department. Honored to be here today. I just want to start by saying that the city of Fresno represents 53.33% of the population of the county of Fresno. So our actions and what we're doing, I think, can be very effective in partnership with what you're doing to slow and manage the spread of COVID-19 in the community. So to just run through briefly, we'll go to the next slide, please. City of Fresno announced shelter in place on March 19th, extended it again on March 30th, April 10th. And then on May 21st, we announced that we were opening businesses on stage 2.5, which was a little ahead of the state. And we also lifted our shelter in place order and put the people of the city of Fresno under the state's stay-at-home order. And then I would add, on July 20th, the council approved an enhanced mask requirement that requires people to wear masks in situations where they can't social distance, including outdoors, and also more stringent employer reporting, so that we could help with the contact tracing and let people know if they were in a workplace where they had people with COVID positives. We've been working on a spending plan for the CARES Act money, next slide, please. For the CARES Act money, since we received it in consultation with the Emergency Operations Center of the city of Fresno, which, per our local ordinance 2-504, is headed by the city manager and includes a variety of department heads. My official title with that group is liaison. That group, in consultation with the mayor and the city council, worked through a variety of scenarios and came up with our coronavirus spending plan. It's basically broken down into three major buckets, and those buckets are where we've allocated the money, and we will move money around at some point. The first bucket is relief for residents and businesses of $25.5 million. The housing retention grants, which Councilwoman Sarria mentioned earlier, we've got $5 million allocated for that. We've got 1.5 million currently going out in the streets now. And the other 3.5 million, we will parcel out between now and December, or perhaps even March, if Congress does go through with the 90-day extension that County Administrator mentioned. We've also got $5 million we're working on to provide additional food assistance to people that are having problems with food security in this time. On the homeless front, we've got $4.5 million allocated to purchase motels, hotels, apartments, to provide additional housing for the homelessness, similar to what the county is doing. That process is maybe able to be expanded with what the state is doing with Project Home Key, to where we might be able to double that with additional applications. And we are also working very closely with the county of Fresno, Housing Authority, and private individuals on that process have had several meetings, including two that I'm aware of this afternoon. We're planning to spend $4 million to retrofit our parks, community centers, and also some of the arts and cultural institutions within the city of Fresno, to be able to better serve their constituents through social distancing and coronavirus. We've put $4 million into small business grants, and also within that is programs to provide parklets for restaurants in order to be able to operate outdoors effectively in the public right-of-way mainly. in the public right-of-way mainly. $2.4 million for childcare for essential workers that are in the lower-income categories, because childcare is very scarce right now and is going to become even scarcer if schools do not open. $110,000 for education on safe business practices. That was through the Economic Development Corporation in conjunction with the Fresno Chamber of Commerce, the Black Chamber of Commerce, and several other chambers of commerce that included Asian-Americans and also Hispanics. So that's the relief for residents and businesses. Next slide, please. We're also putting $20 million in healthcare, of which $10 million is going to go to health clinics and south, a health clinic in southwest Fresno and a health clinic in southeast Fresno. We've got a $5 million contract with University of California, San Francisco, to put three mobile testing units in hard-to-reach areas within the city of Fresno to make sure those people get tested. And on top of that, we're looking at putting another $3 million in expanding testing capability within the city of Fresno. We've used some of that for a number of pop-up testing clinics that council members have done at community centers and tested probably several thousand people through this. And we also have additional money available to assist the county with contact tracing. Then we come to the next slide, which is city services for the residents of the people of Fresno, and that's about $9 million, of which some of that $4.25 million is going to retrofit city facilities to make them better at social distancing and to reduce the transmission of the virus through physical changes we can make in our facilities. We're also expanding our teleworking capability. We've had a significant percentage of the city workforce that can telework, have been teleworking, and we're expanding that to increase it even more. We found that to be quite efficient. About $2 million in current and future city expenses, and we've also purchased, we probably purchased about $600,000 in personal protective equipment so far, and we anticipate about another $400,000 between now and the end of the year. And again, these are buckets. Money can move around depending if it's, we need more in one bucket or we don't spend all the money in another bucket. We can move it around. $25 million for citywide salaries for first responders and others whose positions during this time have been substantially dedicated to the mitigation of coronavirus in the city of Fresno. And then we have a contingency of $13 million for unanticipated expenses, which could also include revenue replacement if that does go through the House and the Senate as planned. In terms of future actions, on the next slide, please. The city council and the mayor would like to develop an M O U for data sharing between the county and the city so that we could have access to additional data on how coronavirus is impacting the city of Fresno without having to be limited by the regulations of HIPAA, and I don't think we're looking for any data that would be protected by HIPAA. I think that will help both of us provide a better, more targeted response to the virus. And we would also like additional joint meetings going forward. I don't know if they have to be this formal, but that's kind of up to you and the other powers that be. So on behalf of the mayor, Council President Arias, Council Vice President Capriolio, Councilmember Saria Chavez, Esparza, see, I can say it correctly, Carbasi, and Brettafield, I would like to thank you all for this opportunity, and I'd be glad to answer any questions. But it was close.
Loise, you want to go ahead and start because you actually asked me first?
Thank you, Chairman Mendez. Appreciate the conversation. I want to thank the county Board of Supervisors, Dr. Vora. Where'd Dr. Vora go? He was here a little while ago.
He's very busy.
I took, no, I didn't.
Mr. Palmival, no, you're not a doctor.
It's been a doctor.
I wanted to, you know, I appreciate the C A O sending over the responses to the questions. I think that's been part of my frustration, my frustration, and then some of my colleagues' frustration. But I want to flag three M O U proposals with specific data for the county to consider, because I think, you know, right now, if you look at our expenditure plan, we're going very broad. I like to refine that and really address it where we know the needs are based on the ZIP Code data that Mr. Orman mentioned. And so what I like to propose is for the city council to get briefed, whether it's in closed session or public information, on really the hotspots, especially within the city of Fresno clusters that we're experiencing, high-risk locations, i.e. senior homes, retirement homes, and those types of facilities. I think that would be very helpful for us to be able to deploy our resources, because right now, as you saw, we have a couple of buckets identified with the expenditures and what that would look like for our city resources. We did sign an agreement, as Tim mentioned, with UCSF to have three mobile units deployed that will be doing testing, tracing. And I want to probably thank United Health Centers for their work. Last couple of weeks, they've tested over 2,150 people. But the challenge that we're having, as many of you know, is the time that it takes for those tests to come back. I mean, it's averaging 10, 13 days. So what I also want to propose to the county is the second part of this collaboration, which would be for the city and the county to jointly purchase test result equipment and ensure that we have a 24-hour turnaround time. I think that would be very helpful for folks in the city and the county in identifying them and, more importantly, getting services to them. As Dr. Vora just explained, time is of the essence early on for this disease. And then the third part that I'd like for the county to consider would be, and I spoke briefly to the C A O and Supervisor Maggie with regards to the emergency plan that we have and what that protocol looks like. I think there's a big need in ensuring that we have a pandemic component built into that because we know that, as Dr. Vora said, this can recede and come back. I think as we go through this challenge, we will develop what works, what doesn't. But formalizing and really codifying what that protocol looks like, I think, would be very helpful in really marshaling all the resources that we have in our community with the church groups that have been doing food distributions, with the health clinics that have been really at the forefront in helping, especially the underserved communities. So if we had that conversation on an ongoing basis, and what I'd like to propose is for us to meet on a monthly basis to kind of reassess where we're at with the data and have real-life statistics to guide our expenses that we're going to have in the next couple of weeks. So I like those three initiatives to be considered by the board. And I know you guys have your own process of going through what that looks like and building consensus, but I think there's consensus on our side that we really have to have that data in order for us to make an informed decision on these expenditures that are going to be coming up the next couple of months. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Did you want somebody to answer that question?
That'd be great.
You want to talk about the pandemic plan?
Well, I can talk about the sensitive facilities that you're concerned about. I think that, and I do think that there is good information that's being put out through the State Department of Public Health on the skilled nursing facilities, and we view them all as high-risk facilities, as well as residential care facilities. So I think focusing efforts there does make good sense, and I think that that's a good, a good constructive area to focus on. With regard to testing, I would love that. I would love it if we could have 24-hour turnaround time. Building that capacity is very difficult. We have been able to acquire pieces of laboratory equipment. We do about 100 tests a day at our lab, and that is infinitesimal compared to the 2,400 tests a day that are being conducted. We will continue to have to rely on the commercial laboratory industry to help pick up a lot of that slack. We are looking at contracts with some of the, they're not as big as Quest and LabCorp, but they're high-production, high-volume laboratories that have been, that have been put together to have contracts in place to increase the turnaround time. But I think we're very much in agreement that anything we can do to decrease that time that it takes to get results back could be great. I think the other piece that, you know, the rapid tests that are out there, hopefully the technology becoming more reliable for good screening, so that, I think that's a tool that we lack in public health today, is a good, reliable, rapid test, and we are hopeful that that will help solve the problems as we go forward, because that's really what we need.
Supervisors Mendez and I spoke a little bit. I believe you guys have an agreement already with Fresno State on augmenting the lab capacity and what that would look like? Is that something we can help?
Yeah, so the reason that we have that agreement is our lab was destroyed in a flood about 18 months ago, and we've been rebuilding the lab. The lab is actually focused, or is under construction, and construction's being expedited at our corporation yard. We've got 6,000 square feet. We believe it'll be a state-of-the-art facility that'll be set up for us very well to serve us the next 20, 30 years. We hope to be occupying that building in October of this year, and in the meantime, we went ahead and acquired the poor pieces of the equipment, what we could get our hands on, and we asked Fresno State if we could set up at their facilities because they had laboratory space available for us. So that's the relationship with Fresno State. It's actually our staff with our equipment working at Fresno State. We have a second machine that we have been, it is an Abbott analyzing machine that does the real-time PCR testing that we've been waiting to come in, to come online with. We actually have reagents and test kits ready once the actual physical equipment comes. The reason I bring that up is that's the demand that's out there. We've been in line for that equipment since February. So that's been, you know, again, part of the whole testing dilemma we've been in from the beginning of this.
Chairman Mendez, just for the sake of the process, Councilmember Esparza and I have been in conversations with UCSF, with various other medical providers. We can forward that information to your folks and maybe huddle up and, so we can come up with, maybe it's an all-of-the-above approach and not just either-or, because I think right now, we're really looking for solutions.
Yeah, we have actually asked the state to really relook at how the testing tools that are out there might be used in, particularly in remote areas and where access to testing is very difficult. And we've asked the statewide testing task force and said, how can we build this into a testing strategy that might be helpful? The problem we have right now is the sensitivity of those rapid tests is high, and so the opportunity for false negatives is very high. And so the miscommunication with regard to, I had a negative, is potentially problematic for then somebody going home and then spreading the disease further. So that's been the mix, but how can that, that type of equipment be utilized better is what we've challenged the state testing task force to look at. So good discussion on that.
And for the C A O, maybe that the emergency preparedness plan is more under your umbrella, Gene, in looking at that. I think that would be very helpful for the city to kind of incorporate that. And I know it's not just us. I saw a letter come down from Orange Cove where they'd like to participate in some of those conversations, and I think that would be a separate conversation for them, but it could be a template that we could use across the county.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, do you guys have, go ahead.
Ms. Orman, I actually have a direct question for you. One, I want to thank you for your tenure of your comments. I think it's changed the atmosphere in here a bit. My direct question is how much to date has the city spent on their COVID dollars? And in addition, I want to support your suggestion. The mayor and I, several years ago, started to reestablish the relationship between the city and county. It's my personal opinion that over the last three to four months, it's kind of frayed. I was hopeful today. I strongly encourage the chairman to have this meeting, while I know it could be contentious, but I believe in the public setting and the transparency that we have this meeting, and I believe if we could have those meetings again, that we could get all these questions answered because we have the benefit that we have direct access to our public health that we get to use at every meeting where the city doesn't have that. So if we could, again, as you suggested, reestablish those meetings with the chairman's consent, obviously, and the city council president's consent, I believe it'd go a long way in reestablishing our commitment to work together, and where our people benefit when we work together rather than we draw these dividing lines up. So again, sorry, Mr. Chairman, for my comment, but that's my direct statement, is how much has the city spent to date so we know what we're working with or what we have left available? In partnering with Councilmember Chavez said, we can do things together, and really, that's important.
Spent and encumbered probably somewhere around $35 million. I mean, it's encumbered, it's by contract or by directive, and will be spent for that particular purpose and won't change.
And Supervisor.
And in terms of your previous comment, we would very much like to reestablish those meetings. So I will be in contact with you and the chairman, and the council president can tell us which other two council members he wants to be there besides himself.
And I'd even be willing, Supervisor Mendez and I have long established that, I'd even be willing to rotate my position so that another supervisor can attend, and maybe the council can do that so that we all can have the access. And again, we need to get back on the same page.
Supervisor, particularly.
We can start on that today.
To your direct question, the council's COVID plan includes $38 million. That's unappropriated yet, and we were planning to use that money for potentially a second wave or revenue replacement if the feds allow it. So from my perspective, that's the bucket of money that would be, you know, potentially available for us to strategically and jointly be able to fund things. And to your point, we hear about infection rates through the paper or through the news media, because we don't have the luxury of having direct access to public health officials, and that's why we are asking a dozen-plus questions, and we'd like to have some data sharing understanding so that we can intelligently invest that money where we'd have the biggest impact based on the medical and public health professionals' advice.
Okay, and Tim, I think we're just, how much time we got, Bernice?
Ten minutes.
How much time's left?
Seven minutes.
Oh, on this item.
Eleven minutes.
Okay.
Seven minutes.
Okay. Tim, you know, this is a, you know, two-way street. You know, we need to, each of us need invitation, I guess, you sent us an invitation, we'll send somebody over there. But there hasn't been any invitations either way since, I think, this whole deal's started, so.
Yeah, I want to just echo the need to reactivate the subcommittee that worked, I think, very well with Brian and board member and our council a couple of years ago, actually the COVID that kind of knocked us out. One other suggestion we might look at is getting better involvement with our school system, because city and the county are both directly affected by what goes on in our school system. So if there's a way to add that element in that meeting, I would recommend it.
Okay, any other questions for Tim? With that, we'll go to the last item, which is the city of Fresno's CARES Act, which we've actually been talking about it, so. Are you done? You did them both, two together?
Yes, yep.
Okay.
Try to be quick and efficient, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So is there any other questions on this?
Mr. Chairman?
If there's time, could they address some of the questions that were presented earlier, now that there is some time that we've saved?
Did you have a question?
Yeah, I did. I wanted to, because the last little group of questions kind of went around a little bit, I want to support Councilmember Chavez's suggestions that we share data. I can be a part of that, or I could support that. And then also, coming together to purchase necessary equipment. Everybody in this, everybody sitting up here knows that I have a staffer that just got, that got tested for COVID-19. Thank God, he never had it, but he had to wait 14 days to get that information back. And he sheltered in place because that's the thing to do. But it's just, it's so messed up that we have to wait that amount of time that I would support that movement to purchase some of that equipment jointly. My question, Tim, is the $30 million that Councilman Brettafield suggested or made a motion that was supported unanimously by council, I believe unanimously, is that part of the 38 million or has that not been encumbered or?
No, that's part of the 92.8 million. More than a third of it, probably $45 to $50 million is going to southwest and southeast Fresno.
So it's really the 38 million that you referenced, plus this, the 38 million plus this 30 million that's kind of spoken for?
Yes and no. Like I said, probably about 40, 45 million's been encumbered and contracted. That leaves about $47 million that hasn't been encumbered or contracted yet in the various buckets. And like I said before, those buckets are flexible. And I would add one thing on the equipment side. Our personal protective equipment purchasing has been working with the county of Fresno for two and a half months, Gene, on jointly purchasing PPE together to get better prices and to make sure that we have it available. So it's not, it's not unprecedented. We've been doing that for a while.
Go ahead, Nathan.
So one thing, too, I know about two and a half months ago, there was a conversation that took place between the mayor, Gene, Tim, you were there, buddy. I know that you were. you were there, about how we can work together. And I think there was a commitment that has continued to be carried through on testing and purchasing a PPE. So, um, even though today we're here to talk about how we can work better together moving forward, I do want to say there have been bridges that have been built and we have been spending money together. And to the extent we can, uh, continue to do better, uh, we're always open and looking for opportunities to do that. As I've been sitting here, one thing that kind of has, has, uh, kind of hit me a little bit is the fact that, you know, we all have different lenses about how we're approaching this situation. And as we move into maybe some additional discussion here shortly, I think what we need to hear is what the priorities are of the city of Fresno, and then you need to hear what the, the county's priority are. And to the extent we can bring those priorities into alignment, I think we'll be able to accomplish more.
Thank you. Um, Dave, what do you feel is, are your priorities?
Well, I think that we've, we've hit on, on many of the priorities that we need to be focused on. You know, one is to make sure that we have good supports for the essential service workers that are out there today so that they can more safely work, that when they do, uh, encounter a, a positive test, when they have to be isolated, that we can get quarantine supports to them, whether that is, uh, assistance with wage replacement, whether it's assistance with, um, some of the housing costs and so forth. And, and I think that we need a, a community press forward on, you know, really doubling down on, uh, on, on social distancing, on making sure that we're doing everything we can, uh, as a community. And that needs, gonna be led by all of us, you know, communicating that in a lot of different ways and from a lot of different voices. Uh, we think that that's what will get our schools back opened up again if we can slow that, slow the rate of infections. And then I think we need the infrastructure built. The, you know, expanding the capacities of the federally qualified healthcare centers is high priority for our office because we believe they're already in the community doing a lot of great work. And to the extent that we can expand their capacity to be able to do more testing, to do more medical investigations, will be the priority. And those, those are the priorities I think we see as we move forward.
Mr. Chairman, if, if I just may add for the city's behalf, in our presentation that was provided by Tim, I think our city outlined our priorities pretty clearly. Um, the COVID plan includes $25 million for direct relief for residents, including businesses, but also in housing relief. 20 million towards the healthcare of new clinics and testing and tracing. $9 million to make sure our employees do their essential work safely. And $38 million for the unforeseen, that we're still waiting for guidance, and that's where I think the opportunity lies between the city and the county. What are the gaps that the county still has that we can help fulfill? Um, either through a partnership in resources or through us doing some very specific actions. Um, and I think that's where, where we're hoping in this next agenda item, we get to flesh some of those things out. My council colleague has outlined a few, um, for the county's consideration, but I'm hopeful that before this December date arrives where we have to spend all this money, that we did in some kind of coordinated way versus kind of shooting in the blind and hoping that something sticks once we throw it against the wall.
Well, I'll, I'll, um, I'll respond to that. You know, I have two suggestions. Um, first of all is the homelessness. Uh, we need to revisit, we, we have Project Room Key, there's some opportunities there. Uh, there is an opportunity for the city to be able to, uh, to continue the services at those, uh, at the hotels through the end of the calendar year into next year. Those are conversations, those, those are things that are low-hanging fruit in my mind. Uh, education in those, in those zip codes makes a lot of sense. Getting, you know, I, how you do it, it, you'll have to figure it out. You have money allocated for that. Maybe do advertising, uh, to the, to the homes on TV, on radio. Uh, we had talked about a surround, a surround sound approach that we're, that we're looking at. We're, we're gonna do even more outreach in education and on the airwaves. Uh, so those are two areas right off the bat that I think just make a lot of sense. Again, the county's, the county is the first responder of the, of the, of the pandemic. So we've got jail issues, we've got medical investigations, we've got the alternative care site. Where we, you know, we have, we've spent, not encumbered, we probably spent and encumbered probably 50 million. And we're gonna blow through that in the next couple of months. And, and so we have to be very mindful that we're the actual responders and you can help us with that, with education. To answer your question about income replacement, we haven't really looked at that because, quite frankly, we're gonna have a hard time stretching our money to, to cover the pandemic response. Uh, I know it's included, some of that's included in the CBO, um, um, contract that we've been talking about. Uh, it's gonna be on a limited basis. We'll do what we can and what we can afford. But I think this, 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 uh, this group that Supervisor Pacheco, uh, recommended, which I think is a great idea, the ad hoc group, makes a lot of sense. We can flush some of these things out. But education immediately and, and then the homelessness effort that, I've got my analyst, Sonia Delarosa, who's not only watching us but on a call with the Housing Authority on, on the permanent housing that we talked about. And then, and then, and I'll, I'll finish with this comment. You've made a, um, Miguel, you had shared with me your frustration that the county was using some hot, some hotels for house, for hotel vouchers that were not, you know, had some code enforcement issues. We have, because of the dialogue in that group, we're now using other hotels that are much, uh, better for our community. So it's that type of thing, that kind of communication on a regular basis that I think we need, we need to have more of.
And CEO, uh, CEO, I would only counter with, from my perspective, and I'll hear from my colleagues, essential workers seem to be, have been left behind. From the meatpacking plants to the Amazon distribution centers, um, farm workers, we'd like to see some kind of committed effort to testing, inspections, and publicizing where, when infections occur so that people can stay home besides just being told of the two or three people you're next to. Those congregant locations, uh, we'd like to know if they're of the source. You know, I like to know whether my mom should be shopping at the Walmart in Kermit this week, whether she should stay home and shop in the Mendoza grocery store. And right now, I can't do that.
Well, Dave, can you touch on the public health aspects of sharing information, that type of information? Because it's been a, a struggle internally in the county for, for a number of months.
Well, I wish we had all the information that was correct and accurate, um, from the medical investigations that are being done. And it is difficult. It is difficult when you have somebody from a government office calling you, you know, seven days after a test and asking you what happened 48 hours before then. And then trusting that you're, we're gonna use the information confidentially and that it's not gonna result in you losing your job or some disparaging, uh, uh, concern coming to you. So it is difficult and we don't get good information. The other part on the employer's side is, um, we have gotten good cooperation from many of the employers i- in Fresno County. Most of the, the cases that we've identified that have an employee nexus has been because the employer has notified us, not as much that we have found an employee that then had a cross-section or intersection as, as the employee base. So oftentimes, the employer is hearing first because the employee is calling and saying, "I tested positive, I shouldn't show up to work." And so the human resources programs are kicking into play and they're doing the contact tracing and investigation at their workplace. So they are integral, and I do agree that there's more that absolutely has to be done with regard to the essential workforce. And that's why I'll go back to, I, I was very much, um, uplifted by the comments of the governor focusing on the essential workforce and some of the disparate populations that have been impacted. That voice came from a lot of, um, conversations that, that counties, that Dr. Vore and I, as well as our counterparts throughout the state, have had with the state health officer and with Dr. Galley in, in, in painting the picture of where we believe many of these cases are coming from. And so I am very supportive of the state's, um, unified, uh, coordinated effort coming into the Central Valley and expanding resources. So I think that we're, we, believe me, we are very much supportive of the comments, uh, that the councilman made with regard to, you know, focusing on the essential workforce and then really having to dig into what's happening outside the workforce. You know, what's happening when the, when the individual goes home? What protective measures are in place there? So the, absolutely parts of the solution, I think that our government collectively can do a better job in supporting them.
Director.
Mike, you had a question?
Um, yeah, I just wanted to, uh, piggyback off of what Supervisors Maxig and Pacheco had mentioned regarding cooperation. Um, you know, obviously in the media, there was a situation last week, Mr. Chairman. And I, I think the message loud and clear here for the public is that, you know, everyone at this table who is elected, we all have different constituencies, we have a lot of diversity on experiences and needs for our, our different districts or, uh, and the county and the city, but we are working together. We see there is a serious problem with COVID-19 in our health today and the economy for today and tomorrow. But I think that what I want the public to see is we are committed to that solution and working together. And I think that's something that, um, the county's on board with. And I want to thank you, Mr. Chairman, for putting this together to show the public that cooperation is real, we take this seriously, and we're gonna be responsible moving forward. So thank you for that, Mr. Chairman.
All right, and this county does a lot of things that you guys don't do. And, uh, Gene, I don't know if you want to just do a quick overview of what, uh, the Social Services Division does?
Well, you know, um, they provide, they provide the, um, you know, the support to needy citizens throughout the county. And, and I, I think what, what I'm excited about is, is, is the partnership between, between our behavioral health, our social services, and our Public Health Department. Uh, we have three very strong leaders in those areas, uh, and, and the, and the community's better for it. The, the CBO contract that, that, that Dave referred to earlier, uh, where, is it really a joint partnership with our Social Services Department? Because our Social Services Department actually contracts with a number of those CBOs already. Um, so we're using, we're using, uh, analysts to help, help develop metrics and, um, and other things to make sure that we're getting the biggest bang for our buck. Uh, some of the CBOs have more bench strength than others. And so the social services and DPH are gonna partner on not only, not only the CBO outreach piece, but the other services that Social Services was providing with those CBOs, um, to, uh, to get the word out to the community.
Well, thank you. With that, we're, we're gonna go, you got it, one last thing, Nelson, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, so I wanted to, you know, as I'm sitting here listening, uh, putting some of these blocks together between, uh, Councilmember Chavez's requests, uh, some of Director Palmerville's comments. Um, you know, one, one sort of anecdote you, you, Director, was about how the, uh, the employers have been very helpful, uh, throughout the county in helping report. Um, and I, you know, taking a look at other cities, other counties across the, the nation, uh, I think one of the effective measures I've seen is, is a mandate for employers to report. Uh, and I think, uh, again, listening to the conversation, I think that, there's maybe an opportunity to go from more of a reactive approach to a proactive approach, and some of those things you've seen are working. Uh, so I wanted to ask you, Director, um, you know, what's, uh, you know, if the county is open to, uh, mandating the employers do report instead of relying on them voluntarily? And if not, you know, if the city were to collect that data, would that be helpful to you, uh, at least with the employers within the city?
So I think it's a good question, and I think it is a bit of a delicate balance that we, we are walking right now. I would encourage you to talk to some of your, uh, large businesses that have large numbers of employees and ask them, um, what that looks like in terms of whether they become more cooperative or less cooperative, uh, in those situations. Some employers have been very difficult to work with. We've had some that have said, "It's none of your business, we don't have to, you know, be dealing with you," and, and they changed their mind. We, we've been able to change their mind to say, "No, this is why you need to be cooperating with us." But, um, but I think that there is a, a fear on the part of the business owners as well in terms of, you know, how much information is gonna be directly then communicated from the Department of Public Health back to the media. So there is a balance that's gotta be struck, and I think that the concern that we've heard from business owners has been that they want to cooperate, they want to do the right thing, but they are concerned about misinformation coming out or infections that are occurring because their workers are picking up the, uh, the virus in other parts, other activities of their life and coming back to the workplace. They test po, they're testing positive, has nothing or little to do with the actual exposure that they had at work. So there's a lot of, of, of concern with regard to that. I think it's something that, I don't have a, the, the answer, um, but I think it is something that we need to listen to our business partners as we go through and make, uh, uh, any kind of a policy decision with regard to that.
Well, well, Director, I, I think we listen to our business partners, you know, in the, when we reopened and, and we find ourselves where we are now. Um, and obviously, they're always gonna be at the table, but again, if, if the county, you know, couldn't muster the, the courage to kind of provide that mandate, if the city did, I mean, would that data be helpful to you folks in terms of the sources of, uh, infections? We know infections don't originate in the workplace, someone brings it there. Um, but I, I see this as even more of an incentive for employers to, you know, provide those measures so that any infection that is brought in does not spread.
I, I, I think I would want to have more information about how effective that would be, and I would want to hear what level of cooperation we would get. We, we do value working with the business community. It's not just about reopening. Uh, we worked very hard with many of them. You know, they're, they're still trying to figure out what, you know, what happens when we do reopen because it is always going to be a, a, a graduated, um, uh, level of implementation as we go forward. So, uh, the, the protective measures that are, that were put in place, those are gonna be utilized against, again, once we start to open things back up. But I, I, you know, believe that we need a cooperative relationship with them, and so I, I don't know that I want to answer the question specifically today that that mandate would be overall beneficial. Um, I would like to have more discussion about that before making that determination.
Okay, that, with that, we're out of time, so, uh, we're gonna move, we're gonna have a public comment, but before that, um, we have, um, Congressman Costa, and I'm gonna give him five minutes.
Is he here in person or on the phone?
He's on the phone.
No, I'm not here in person, I'm in Washington DC.
Thank you, Jim.
Uh, thank you, uh, uh, Mr. Supervisor and members of the city council. Uh, I, uh, appreciate the opportunity to share some thoughts with you. Uh, my colleague Congressman Cox and I sent a letter to the, uh, you, Mr. Chairman, and the entire Board of Supervisors, along with President Miguel Arias and the city council members of Fresno. And I hope you all received a copy of that letter on Friday.
Congressman, yes, we did, for the record.
Yes, we did.
Did, are you done? Is that it?
No.
Okay, go ahead.
I sent, I'm, I'm just opening.
Okay, go ahead. You got five minutes.
I wanna thank you, I wanna thi, I got that. Thank you for the opportunity to address, uh, this joint session. I'm a very glad that you've done this, I think, uh, it's important. Uh, I wished it had been sooner, but clearly the impact of COVID-19, uh, has been on all of our minds. It's unprecedented in this country. Uh, the House of Representatives has passed five bipartisan stimulus packages to address this unprecedented public healthcare crisis. Um, more recently, the CARES Act, uh, which provided, uh, direct allocations, uh, to the city and the county, uh, totaling, uh, some 81,000, 81 million dollars plus, uh, to the county and 92 million dollars plus to the city of Fresno. Uh, I've tried to be in contact with the three county boards of supervisors that are in my district, along with the city councils and the mayor. Uh, and, uh, I, I urge all of you to do everything as you're trying to do today, to collaborate and coordinate. This is going to be with us for the rest of this year until next year. And I think, uh, if we've learned any lessons in the last three or four months, there are no quick shortcuts to get out of this. Every dollar of these funds is vital to responding to the pandemic, and that means additional testing. Uh, contract tracing must be a priority. And if we can't frankly turn this around within 48 or, or 72 hours of testing, uh, the, the contract, uh, tracing efforts, uh, I think, uh, are not as significant.
What's, what's?
Clearly, I'm very concerned now and over the next several months with harvest season. We have farm workers that are out there at risk, uh, with many of them carpool, uh, social distancing is difficult. A pandemic was never envisioned with our food processing facilities, our, our packing sheds, they're working in the fields. Uh, many of these, uh, housing situations are, are difficult, and, uh, I think the increase, uh, in the next two months sadly is going to continue. It's critical that we get past politics. We should never, ever politicize a pandemic as we have seen here in Washington and around the country. I think the best response for the pandemic involves full coordination in the case that we are discussing today with the county and the city of Fresno and our neighboring counties and state. I commend the governor yesterday for his additional funding. We need a valley-wide approach as we look at this harvest season, uh, and I, uh, am going to do everything I possibly can to continue to support you as I have done in the past. Um, the HEROES Act will provide additional funding for the entire nation, for states, and for counties. Um, it would provide 1.5 billion dollars if we kept it at the 3.2 billion level that is in the House version. The Senate came out yesterday with their version, it's at $1 billion. version. It said 1 billion dollars. And there is no, no support in the Senate version for states, counties, or cities. Obviously, that, in my view, is not satisfactory. In addition, in our measure that is waiting for negotiation, there's sixteen and a half billion dollars for agriculture. And that is to provide a safety net for not only our nation agricultural community, but for our state as well. Involved in that is money for support, for protection for farm workers, for those working in our packing sheds and our food processing facilities. It is absolutely essential that we provide that. Let me close by saying, I don't have to tell you, I represent six hospitals in my district. They are overwhelmed. Our healthcare workers are overwhelmed. We must treat this with the utmost urgency. We are in uncharted waters. And only if we work together in a coordinated and collaborated sense, working with our hospitals, working with our healthcare clinics.
Thank you, Congressman.
Are we going to be successful? And thank you, Mr. Supervisor. I appreciate your time.
Okay. Now, Assemblymen, we'll give you five minutes to address this.
I appreciate the opportunity to address this joint workshop. COVID-19 is the pandemic of the century. And as a doctor, I see the urgency in, to, in our county to better protect our essential workers and to support our frontline workers in our healthcare facilities. These people keep our economy going during this unprecedented emergency. And these people who put their own health at risk to care for us in our time of need. If I may, I want to address those in the audience who are Spanish speakers. Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Joaquin Arambula, y represento al Distrito Treinta y Uno en la Asamblea de California. Estoy aquí como doctor y servidor público. Estoy aquí porque tengo una preocupación profunda. Me preocupa que las comunidades rurales están siendo olvidadas. I quiero pedir a los supervisors del Cantado de Fresno que escuchen las necesidades de la comunidad. La falta de información y protección en lugares de trabajo están poniendo en riesgo a nuestros trabajadores. Trabajadores que son esenciales y continúan trabajando para que nuestra economía siga funcionando. Le pido a nuestra comunidad que participe en el proceso público y haga su voz contada para que nuestros servidores públicos tengan en cuenta sus necesidades a la hora de decisiones. Urgency is the word I keep using, because people in our rural communities and workers in our healthcare facilities are raising the alarm about the need for quicker, direct, and effective actions to battle COVID-19. Just yesterday, Fresno County reported the number of cases since the pandemic began now has surpassed thirteen thousand in the county. And we know we have one hundred and twelve who have died, while others are fighting for their lives in our hospitals that are at or are reaching capacity. We also know that Latinos make up a disproportionate number of the people in California, not only infected by this brutal virus, but that are dying at a greater rate. Something has to change and change now. Our county now is now more than one hundred days into this pandemic. I and other community members want transparency and details on how the Fresno County has spent or intends to spend their federal and state CARES Act dollars to combat COVID-19. We ask, why haven't these taxpayer dollars been pushed out faster and more deliberately? We ask if Fresno County supervisors have meaningfully engaged with community-based and faith-based organizations, the trusted messengers that we rely on to communicate with our diverse communities, especially those where English is not their first language? We know these organizations play a crucial role to provide accurate information, to promote health and safety, and to offer comfort to those afflicted by the virus. We ask why the Fresno County supervisors haven't moved more swiftly to provide mobile testing in rural communities west of Highway 99. Many essential workers are farm workers who cannot leave work or home, or don't have transportation to travel to a free testing site. We ask if Fresno County supervisors considered assistance for food, utilities, and rent for families hit hard by COVID-19. During these months of the pandemic, I've seen hundreds of people in the county come to free food distributions to keep their families fed. I've seen their despair and fear about what lies ahead. In addition to what's happening in our rural communities, I am concerned about how a surge of COVID-19 could trigger using an alternate care site in Fresno. Yesterday, one of our local hospitals reported they have three hundred and twenty-three of its workers who are afflicted by COVID-19 and are in self-isolation. I want to know more about the county supervisor's plan to support our hospitals and their staffs. I've made it my life's mission to work towards health equity. And I see how COVID-19 has exacerbated the disparities in our most vulnerable and disadvantaged communities. As elected officials, we are the stewards of public dollars. We must allow for meaningful public participation so that decisions reflect the needs of our community. As Dr. Golly said yesterday in talking about the challenges facing Fresno County and other Central Valley counties, the moment is now to work together. As Dr. Vora said today, time is scarce, denial is deadly, and failure is not an option.
Okay.
I offer my assistance in this fight. I know the people of Fresno County are strong, tough, and resilient. We can do this better together.
Okay, we'll start, is there anybody else on the line? Okay, we'll now move to public comment, general public comment. And you have, you'll get two minutes. So whoever wants to be first, go ahead and come up. Yes.
At the podium?
Yes, Chairman.
This podium?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm Mark Johnson. I'm from Sanger. I would, I'm not the Mark Johnson who used to be superintendent of schools. It's my cousin and Mark Johnson who used to be city councilman, mayor, and city attorney. I would like to thank the Board of Supervisors and the County Department of Health for having a testing center in Sanger. One of the positions I currently occupy, appointed by the Board of Supervisors, is as president of the Sanger Delray Cemetery District. I don't know if you know that cemeteries and mortuaries were limited to ten people in attendance for a funeral. And we've had to work with the county health department to accommodate that we could only have two services per day, and we could only have ten people in attendance. We were able to open up visitation. We had closed cemeteries for visiting graves, but for Mother's Day and Memorial Day, we were able to open the cemeteries to accommodate families visiting their mother's graves. And veterans were able to put over, on a smaller, limited Memorial Day service. I also serve as chairman of the board of our Church Board of Trustees, Sunrise Baptist Church in Clovis. And we shut down for three months. We had services online only. We were closed for Palm Sunday, Easter, but we were able to open by end of May on a limited basis. And now we're closed again. They can only have services outside in the hot weather or online. I think that church services are an essential service and need to be provided for their community. I think that's my time, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Leslie Martinez with Leadership Council for Justice and Accountability. I work directly with most of the rural communities of this county. My comments today are based on the conversations I have had with hundreds of Fresno County residents during this pandemic. And the various letters that I have sent to this board, the various comments that I have sent to this board that have gone unanswered, most of the time. Residents in disadvantaged, unincorporated communities needed this board to respond to this pandemic with bold leadership and a commitment to support the constituents that you were all elected to serve. Until now, this board has failed. The hard-working communities of Cantua Creek, Three Rocks, Lanier, Riverdale, Kawa, and so many others. And I know this because they call my cell phone and tell me what it has been during this pandemic. Families have lost all their income. People have had to band together to get their kids to stay at Fresno State because there is no internet infrastructure. I'm, I'm tired of getting these phone calls because of this board's lack of leadership. Residents are once again asking for the same things that they have been asking for since March. You can look at the public record. It is in my letters, and it is in the comments that I have stayed up writing for none of you to acknowledge or to be read aloud. There is no accountability on this board for the hundreds of community members that have been asking to participate with you all. They are asking for you all to invest in democracy. We want Fresno County, your neighbors next door were able to set up a phone call. They were able to have the hardest conversations through Zoom. You can all do that, too. Rent and mortgage and utility assistance needs to be done. There are families who do not, who are scared on how they're going to pay their rent. There needs to be more mobile testing in unincorporated communities. We need to protect our essential workers and our volunteers. We need investment in broadband infrastructure. And we need to provide financial support for COVID treatment of older people.
Time's up. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. My name's Diana Laurent, and I'm a practicing local community pharmacist that owns a small business in northeast Fresno. Our pharmacy's been serving the San Joaquin Valley for fifty-one years. I'd like to start off with a quote, "He who fears he will suffer already suffers because he fears." Our communities are walking around in fear, and our lives are being decimated. I do not agree with Dr. Vora's version of where the mortality rate is for COVID-19. It is simply not that serious for the vast majority. The mortality rate is low. The chances of you of dying of a COVID-19 infection in Fresno County is point zero 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 one percent. What that means is that you have a ninety-nine point nine 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 chance of full recovery. Kings County, Madera County, Mariposa County, Merced County, and Tulare County also have those similar statistics. And that mortality rate will continue to decrease as testing increases because more people are going to be positive. I question the data that's being reported. I had a firsthand story from a physician over the weekend that was handed a thousand dollars as he walked into a nursing home to sign a death certificate and say it was COVID. He ignored it. Masks do not prevent disease. Most people don't wear masks correctly, nor are they made of material to prevent the spread of airborne particles or droplets. Our focus must be on the protection of those at the highest risks. I've seen the firsthand effects of isolation, quarantine, social distancing, and masks for the healthy. What I've seen is dramatic increases in sleep disturbances, anxiety, panic, depression, loneliness, and suicidal thoughts. These are detrimental to our community and counterproductive to the healing and well-being.
Thank you.
Good morning, Councilmembers, Board Supervisors. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to voice my concerns. I wanted to address an issue that is really upsetting for me and many other Clovis residents. I have a child that's supposed to be entering ninth grade, going into high school, and another one that's currently enrolled in college here locally. The Clovis Unified School District did an extraordinary job on communicating with their staff and students and parents to find out how the community would like to move forward. Both staff and parents said they wanted to return to a traditional five-day-a-week school schedule in an overwhelming majority. Unfortunately, after the governing board voted to open up the school while providing an option to both staff and students where they could choose, their learning experience would be best for them, either in person or online. Unfortunately, our King Gavin decided that he would make the decision and take away local control from CUSD. This is going to have major long-term impact on the community, especially the students. We don't understand the long-term effects on the mental illness, the long-term effects on the education gaps that will occur, and the many children who do not have the support of a parent at home, and school is one of the few places where they had structure. Those are the children both sides scream about helping and will be the ones affected the most, including low-income and minority students. Parents and teachers both had an opportunity to evaluate their personal circumstances. If they have someone in their family that is high-risk, and they were worried about a child bringing home the virus from school, they can choose to do the online program without punishing the other seventy-five percent of families that have made it clear they want traditional class instruction. At some time, at some time, we need to focus on the vulnerable and instruct them the best methods of taking care of themselves and allowing them to choose how they would like to live their lives. We can't just keep going on and punishing people and doing all this. And I'd like to honestly thank the Board of Supervisors for not being over-restrictive and jumping the gun and playing the fear tactic games. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gilbert Montalongo, Pastor Montalongo, Gilbert, and with Board Directors, Board Directors of the National Hispanic Christian Leadership Conference, and under the leadership of Reverend Dr. Samuel Rodriguez. And thank you for this opportunity. I believe that what I've been hearing today is that there is such a great need, and I believe that we do need to come together. I do believe that we cannot ignore each other. I believe that there are key, key leaders and organizations that can really be of great help. The faith community, and faith in no way cancels or ignores the reality that we're facing today, the circumstances that we are, are dealing with, which is big, COVID-19. And whether you believe or not, God has given all a measure of faith. And he has put in the conscience of every human being a universal, a universal law of right and wrong. And I think that's where we're at, is what's right and what's wrong. You know, Dr. Randall had mentioned about his dedication to the, to the health, and the committee of the health and the well-being of people. Well, I have dedicated myself to the Lord and the well-being of people's souls, you know, as well. And I remember our organization doing, through the Barna Group, a survey regarding the Hispanic community. And one of the key elements in that survey was that, in the, in the Hispanic community, was faith. And, and faith that the, the family unit. And, and with faith, we can achieve a whole lot more. I, I believe that in the right and the wrong, that as we look toward the right answers and trying to solve some of the issues that we're facing. You see, I believe, and I tell people all the time, is that the choices we make in life determine the quality of life we live. And I know that every one of us in position has to make decisions regarding the people and their well-being, their health. And, you know, and, and in doing so, and in doing so with the people, I believe that we want, we want their best interest. We are facing something huge, something tremendously, very, very big.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate your patience there. My name is Pastor Jimmy Foote of Breaking Free Revival Center. Our church is in the center of Fresno. My family moved here seventeen years ago from the Bay Area. And I was delighted to discover a community in which the church was so honored, and there was such a connection with the community here. In the time I've been here, I've made a lot of friends. I've seen a lot of connections with the church. I've seen the church be part of many of the initiatives that serve the homeless, that was mentioned before, within our education system, our medical system. And the church and churchgoers are interwoven quite tightly with the life of this community. It's very much the conscience of this community. And I'm sure you've heard this before, that Fresno County is like the shiny belt buckle of the Bible Belt of California. Obviously, we're facing a major crisis, and a lot of things have already been said. I want you to keep in mind, if you would, that the church had felt it was relegated to the back burner by some of Sacramento's policies, that we didn't that we didn't rise to the measure of a liquor store or a cannabis dispensary. But I want you to know that our community needs its churches in place. Now, our pastors, some, and some gathered here, meet on a regular basis with their people outside or in smaller groups. Others, like my church, we hardly have anybody there as we livestream. And that's been a good thing for us. But I guess the key word I'd like to present to you is trust. The trust that we need as all of us as leaders and servant leaders of our community to do what.
Thank you very much.
Eliseo Gaminho, President of the Central Valley Leadership Roundtable. I want to start today by saying, rest in peace, José Manuel Ornelas, council member of San Joaquin, who died of COVID-19. Descansen paz, José Manuel Ornelas. Te quitó la vida el COVID-19, pero tu legacy va a seguir. It will continue. I'm here because a lot of the communities in the rural areas, San Joaquin, Raisin City, Mendota, Fireball, are suffering. They need relief with rent. They're feared if they're going to lose their home and move on to the streets. Those families that were paying their mortgage and a home, now they had to move to a trailer. This illness is affecting all communities, but the rural communities are being hit the hardest. In Mendota, we have Ofelia Ochoa, who has been relentless in providing different meals to the families. She had to sell masks. We have Dona Lourdes from Raisin City, who herself, at the beginning of this pandemic, sold over 2,000 masks on her own to give out to different families and children. So the resources that we have, we need to spend the monies now to combat COVID-19. Yes, there's reserves on for the next wave, but if we can beat it now with a strong front, we're going to have a better chance of improving all those that are getting infected. Rent relief is needed. I want to commend the City of Fireball, the leadership, the council members, the mayor, the pro temp, Freddy Valdez, who right away, they went into action and provided hand-washing stations. They didn't have to. They did it on their own. And this is leadership. They don't, they haven't identified the money they're going to pay for those hand-washing stations. So I really would like to.
You're done. Thank you. We will just hear from five more speakers. So that's the, this is the first one. Right now, we are already over the 30 minutes. Go ahead.
I am usually the beginning of the end in a lot of ways. Chairman, Mayor, members of the board and council, thank you so much for this meeting today. I think what you've done in coming together is to be highly commended. And I think what we've seen here is the beginning of something that can help work together. One thing that I do, I haven't heard a lot of, though, is we've looked for resources to be able to meet this need, is for the mental health need of so many that are being impacted by this, that it's impacting their families. That's the organization that I represent. That's what we do. We do mental health. We do spiritual health. We have about 500 locations across Fresno and Clovis, and I'm talking about the church. We're not asking for any money. We're not asking for any of the budget. We're just asking that we can be open. The governor has limited us in the size of our meetings and now has moved us outside. I understand the risk, but obviously, there's times when people need to get together to, that overcome that risk. You've proven that today by meeting indoors where you very easily could have met outdoors. And I agree with you. This is something very important that you're doing, and you need to be able to meet to have these types of things. We're just asking that you let the church do the same, that we can help to reach out to help meet some of these mental health needs. Suicide was twice last month what it was the month before. So there's no way to deny the mental impact that this is having. Again, I would just ask you to be an advocate for us as the faith-based communities and houses of worship to be able to open up and to provide those services. We have even been stopped from having small group meetings, which that is really the core of that. So we ask you for that and helping you to help us to help relieve this serious epidemic that we have here. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Good afternoon. I'm a resident of Council District, or Board Supervisor District III. And I'm somewhat disappointed to see that when people come in front of you and they start talking about we need to open up because of the types of reasons that have been trotted out here this morning, then you fold, 3,000 people go to Sacramento, and Governor Newsom folds, 300 people go to City Hall, and everybody decides it's time to open up, and the statistics automatically shoot up. It's other people's lives that are affected. You have Clovis with a population of 122,000, reported 644 cases. You have Dinuba with a population of 24,000, reported over 700 cases. You have Mendota with 11,000 population, reported over 500 cases. That's no coincidence. It's not a lifestyle choice. They don't live like cockroaches. They work in packing houses. They work in the fields. And if you would watch the PBS program the other night, one of the packing houses, Central Valley Meet, which is not in Fresno, it's in Hanford, reported over 200 infections. And then all of a sudden, at the same time that Reece Foods was also reporting close to 200 infections, those reports stopped. So we've submitted to OSHA a request for information over a month ago to get that information. And now we find that the Public Health Department also has that information. And when that information is disclosed, and people see that you're not reporting, and there's no transparency to the public, and you're putting people's lives in danger, and people are not even aware, but they don't have the right to choose, there's going to be consequences for that. And I hope you understand that, and I hope you regret it. This is Leo Diaz, 60 years old. It could have been me sitting at my breakfast table eating pozole. He died after 20 years at Sun Maid Ray.
Okay, thank you very much.
Good morning, council members and supervisors. My name is Gracia Lenas, and I'm with Leadership Council for Justice and Accountability. Now, you have all been elected to lead, but at this time, it has been disappointing to see that amongst you, some of you have not been taking that leadership seriously. But you can still act. There is still time. You can start by providing, you can start by providing safe remote access to meetings like today. The county has unfortunately failed to uphold our democracy and has failed your constituents to ensure safe remote access to meetings, to these types of meetings. And in contrast, we actually commend the City of Fresno in the way it has upheld their public participation to ensure two-way communication, translation, and so on. For the future meetings, we hope to see that meetings like these, these joint meetings, future supervisor meetings, and future city council meetings will continue and will start being accessible remotely, where folks can comment live during those meetings, and where folks can have access to translation in their preferred language. Second, as we inch closer and closer to that December 1st deadline where we have tens of millions of dollars left to spend, we need to act swiftly, and we need to act smart. For months, the county and the city has sat on over $200 million that can protect the safety and the health of our communities and our economy. But we're going through the worst economic times while we're holding those dollars. And so now, we urge the city council to program those emergency dollars as soon as possible and no later than the September budget hearings to continue investing in health, economic security, and family stability. And some of the programs that they have already invested, like rental and mortgage assistance, but also utility assistance, also food aid programs and whatnot. And similarly, we urge the board to act swiftly and act now and spend those dollars in line with community priorities as my colleague.
Thank you.
I think it's noon. Good noon hour to everyone. My name is Pedro Hernández with Audubon, California. As one of the longest-standing environmental organizations based on data and science, we hold very firmly that the county and the city of Fresno should also listen to the best practices and sciences to curb the spread of COVID in Fresno County and the city of Fresno and every other city here. But I'm also here, you know, speaking as a resident of Fresno County, a long-term resident of Fresno County. I found out this last weekend that every single member of my family tested positive for COVID. And I found out two and a half days ago that my mother was hospitalized. And so I know there's a lot of doubt and, you know, a lot of like statistics that are thrown out to combat each other. But really, like every second and every day of inaction is really compromising the long-term future of not only like my family, but overall society in the San Joaquin Valley as well, too. So I'm urging you all to hold each other accountable and to work throughout this process with integrity, which I think is missing and fairly evident from certain members of this committee as well, too. Fairly evident from the fact that we can extend privileges of remote participation to elected officials, but not to the members of the community that are most affected by your lack of decision-making as well. So we urge you to curb this spread of COVID, to restrict access and limit public participation in economic activities like bars and so on and so forth. We know that we can exist in these limited opportunities, but also, we want, excuse me, Chairman Mendez, I'm trying to address you. I want you to support rental assistance, utilities, assistance, and emergency food services as well, too, because we all know and we can't ignore the fact this is an undeniable question.
Thank you. This will be the last speaker.
There are other people that would like to speak. Thank you. My name is Brandy Nusiegas. I work with, I'm an advocate with the homeless. And I want to thank Dr. Vora, if I said that correctly, so much for your information and letting us know what we're facing. And thank you to the council members that have been asking questions and speaking up on behalf of those who are vulnerable. And I support the efforts to be able to combat this. I wanted to speak on the homeless to appress you to look in with the remaining monies to expand and help and keep looking to fill in the gaps for the homeless. I appreciate that funds have gone to housing and for the relief for those housed. But I humbly submit that that percentage is, that we, there is no way to come up with a percentage of those who have been helped. If it's based on the point of time count, it's known by advocates that that number is extremely low. But most importantly, there are people who are not housed that want to be housed and didn't have an opportunity, including a homeless couple I know who are waiting for the SSI to be able to be in a motel. So I ask for efforts for that, to expand that. I also ask for robust continued outreach, that you take mobile testing regularly out to the homeless, not just to the PAFs, but to different camps, and to work with those who know where they are to be able to get to them, to provide masks and sanitary supplies regularly, like wipes and hand sanitizers to protect them. And I also ask that to consider things like safe lots, where they can safely put their tents, where people can be able to reach them because they get them their test results, where they won't be run off by the county or city, where they can safely be able to be distant and get the help that they need in the middle of this COVID. And that you continue looking for creative things to be able to fill the gaps so that as many people are helped. And that you also continue to do what you can to help the other vulnerable, those in the camps, those in rural areas, those who are not being served as effectively that have been voiced beforehand